It's now 7:00 PM. I'll call the meeting to order. Can we have the pledge allegiance to the flag, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice alone.
A slight difference in order in the agenda. If you watched it on cable TV this weekend, we've got a awards presentation being made by our veterans agent, Larry Corbin. Larry?
Good evening. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to do this presentation. As you know, the town is involved, or I am involved, as the veterans director, with the Root Nine Veterans Forum, which is a cable network television program. The program started a year ago, July of '07, in Leicester. The producer is Bill Moore. I'm the co-host. We do the show monthly, and we alternate it between Leicester, and we alternate it between Leicester and Auburn. We couldn't do the show without the help of both towns. We were nominated recently for a very special award, which actually, Bill and I didn't think anything about it. We just kind of thought, yeah, we're new kids on the block, we're not going to get any awards for a cable TV program. But the cable show is a multitude. It focuses on informing veterans and families of the core issues of health care, psychological needs, benefits, claims, legislation, employment, training. There isn't any subject we don't touch. We inform parents, grandparents, wives, everything. Widows, everything. Everything that goes on to do with the veterans. This show, the Root Nine Veterans Forum, which originates from both Leicester and Auburn, are completely, 100 percent, done independently by Bill and myself. We couldn't do it without the help of Auburn Cable TV Network and Chris Hugo. However, just to let you know that the award that we were nominated for is the Rika Walsh Community Access Award. I'll let Bill talk about that. Bill?
Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Bill Moore. I'm from Leicester. We, Larry and I, won the 2008 Rika Walsh Community Impact Award. And what it was for, it was presented to us on November 15th, 2008, for generating a project whose impact spoke directly to a clearer understanding of the cause being championed. The content, whether modest or large, would reflect a passion of the goal because of the use of PEG resources, which is the cable access station. A greater empowerment of purpose and appreciation of the value of those resources was achieved. The northeast region encompasses, and we were up against other people that were nominated for this award, Connecticut, Maine, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, New York, Rhode Island, and Vermont, and they chose us. So we just, Larry, if we could call up Chris Hugo, we'd like to present him with a plaque for the town of Auburn. Chris?
Chris, this plaque was given to the Root Nine Veterans Forum, a television program with which your help could not have been as successful as it began. We were totally surprised to receive the award, especially since we were competing against all the big other independents. So congratulations and thank you. That's for you to...
Thanks a lot.
Yes. He's a gem.
I just want to thank Rich Hutton and Alice Bromels, our principal camera operators, who have been working with us. And I gotta run back to the station now that it's acting up again.
Congratulations. Thanks for the time. We appreciate it. Larry?
Sir?
From what I understand, all these shows go overseas too. Am I correct in that?
Oh, yes, sir. We are now in 80 different towns in the Commonwealth on the cable networks. We're in eight foreign countries, including Moscow, Beijing, Kosovo, Saudi Arabia, the naval fleet in the Persian Gulf, Belgium, Germany. We are now worldwide. In Iraq. We're on the Internet. You can go to Root9, that's R-T-nine, Veterans Forum, and you can pull up all of our TV programs for the last year. And we're pretty proud of that because we started out with two guys from nowhere in the kitchen, and now we're worldwide.
But I talked to some guys up at VA, and they actually asked me about the show and if I'd known you and more. And I says, "Yeah, I did." And they really, they appreciate it overseas because unless you've been overseas and you've got nobody there, and you really don't know what's going on with the town, what's going on with your home and things like that, and you'd be surprised what this will do for the guys overseas. Thank you again, especially from me.
Thank you, Carl. It's an honor to work with the vets. You know that we do this with our hearts, too, so thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the minutes of October 27th. We have motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There's a vote. Also, minutes of November 3rd.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There's a vote. Under citizens' comments, we have Edie Dow.
Thank you, all you gentlemen up there, and the lady. How many minutes do I have? Five?
Three.
I'm gonna make it in three.
That's it.
Oh, and that's not fair, because I said I was never coming back here. But, okay, can I? I know this is not the weather for this, but after my neighbor across the hall came over and said, "Edie, you want to read this?" By the bullets on the Auburn news last week, I said, "Okay." So I read it. And that brings out the good old cemetery again. I wrote a letter asking, "Cemetery flowers over the years..." Excuse the gum, it's my security blanket. "I'm not watered on a regular basis. Now the mums are dying because of no water. Why is that?" And the answer from Mr. Bloom, Chris, was, "The flowers are not watered on a regular basis because it depends on the type of weather that we have. This summer was rather moist, most of the time, so it wasn't necessary to water as often as a dry summer. The CIP for employment, I mean improvement, there is some money that I plan to hook up a new sprinkler system in the veterans flower bed." I'll try to read this really fast. Like I said, I didn't want to come here, but if she hadn't given me that, I'd been fine, right home. But after my neighbor gave me this, I read you the letter that I wrote, and he answered. This answer was not acceptable to me, and I hope others in Auburn. You people go to the veterans on Memorial Day. I assume you don't go any other day unless there's a funeral or something. You look all around under the vets, and you see hundreds of plants. Count the dollars there, where I'm sure the veterans, and I know at least six up there that were my friends years ago, they wouldn't care if there was only one flower up there as long as we didn't forget them. Not the flowers, the veterans. You all should go back in July when the weeds are bigger than the plants and the flowers are withering from no H2O. There were eight sprinklers. I counted them a long time ago, right over the vet's garden, and they did work because I used to water the flowers sometimes when nobody was around. But you have to go down and get the handle and turn it on because it's in the ground. They worked fine then. You have to turn them on first. Many, many dollars are wasted at Hillside every year, hundreds of dollars. I watered, and he said that he had a moist summer. Well, I took care of the senior center's garden all summer, and I watered about every four to five days, otherwise they would have died. And so did the people with the gardens at Packer Chog Village. Do the residents... This is my last line, guys. Do the residents of Auburn know about the two newly paved... Mr. Hammond, are you listening?
Of course.
Do the residents of Auburn know about the two newly paved roads at the cemetery? Who paid for that? Thousands of dollars are wasted. It wasn't needed. And some of the roads, like Packer Chog, for instance, are, some places are very washboard. Shame, shame on the cemetery. And it's a cemetery. It's not the White House Gardens. In a 40-mile radius, I have never seen such waste as Hillside Cemetery. I know that there's no flowers growing now, but there will be. This is for Mr. Lutman, because if I read this, I'd probably cry.
Thank you, Edie.
Thank you. See, now we took a couple minutes, right?
Right. Okay, next, Laurie Lancia.
I just wanted to let the people of Auburn know what kind of decisions have been made without anybody knowing the full circumstance. I was able to get a copy of Mr. O'Connor's new extended contract. I understand there's a 2.5 percent increase in his salary, the additional vehicle expenses. But reading through it, we're also going to pay for indemnity liability insurance on his personal vehicle. We're going to pay $100 a month towards disability insurance, pick up his health insurance policy, reasonable payments for a $500,000 life insurance policy. But we're in a spending freeze. We haven't been able to fix the heating system, obviously, in this building because it's like Florida. And we're allowing all this extra spending to go on, and people in the town hall think they might get laid off. And I just think this is a great misjustice by our board. We voted for you to represent us, to do what's best for the town of Auburn, and you're approving all of this additional spending when people are wondering if they're going to have a 32-hour week, a 40-hour week, if they're going to have a job next month, because we're in a spending freeze. And I just think it's very wrong to keep this a secret. It was never discussed in public. It was done in executive session. Nobody knew about it. And I think this is another example of what the people of Auburn don't know that they should know, because it's our taxpayer money that's paying all of these expenses, and I just, I feel this is not right. Plymouth is upset because their town manager is going to get a three-month severance package. Mr. O'Connor is going to get a 12-month severance package. It's so out of balance that it just, it floors me. And I think the people of Auburn need to know the whole truth and not just the little particulars that they want to put in the newspaper. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone want to make any comments? Moving on, for public hearings and presentations, we have an application for the change of name of the Auburn Lodge of Elks on 754 Southbridge Street to Auburn Webster Lodge, number The reason for the change is the combining of the two lodges into one, both being under the same lodge number as the present. And Mr. Coakley is here this evening, who's the manager at the Elks. If anyone has any questions regarding the change, license change.
Move to open the hearing. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Hearing is now open. Larry, do you have any comments that you want to add? I mean, Bill, excuse me.
No. I think it's pretty...
Pretty cut and dry.
...what sort of helps merge with us, and nothing else is changed.
Any members...
Close the hearing.
Okay. Any people in the audience have any comments regarding it or questions? Okay, there's motion to close the hearing. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have a motion to accept the change.
Approve the change in name.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote. Okay, agenda item 5B, license renewal hearing on Chieftain's Package Store. We just received a letter that was added to our packet this evening. They're writing with regards to the package store. Due to health issues, our family has been able to operate the business. We have been aggressively attempting to sell the business, however, the economy has not been on our side. The liquor license is a vital selling point and would drastically decrease the saleability of the property if not available. This has been a family-operated business for over 65 years, supporting our family and largely contributing to the economy of the town of Auburn. We would humbly request the additional time so as to secure a pending sale. Do you have a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's now open for comments. Board members? Mr. Lutman? Do we have any idea how long he's looking for, or can we do it legally and just extend it?
Through the chair, this letter came in late this afternoon from the family, asking for a hold on any disposition by the board.
Any other board members have any questions?
So as a follow-on to Carl's question, and we can assume then there's been no opportunity to seek, you know, some advice of whether we can legally extend this.
Correct. Through the chair, it was late this afternoon. I believe it was just dropped off, and I would say it was in roughly 3 o'clock.
Mr. Lutman? I don't know, can we continue for two weeks, you know, next meeting, and just tell them, hey, you know, this is it. You have to be here to explain what's going on.
Oh, wait.
Do you like to come forward to the podium?
I'm Cheryl Kemp. I'm one of the listing agents with Keller Williams Realty, and this is Mike DeGillis, also co-lister. The buyers, I understand, are here, and we're ready to move forward, but we do need, this is a real vital piece that we have for the sale, to continue the sale of the property. Mike, can you? We have it under agreement, but we just need to be able to secure the license so we can, the transfer of the license in order for the sale to continue.
Mr. O'Connor?
Do you have a closing date scheduled?
We can close as soon as the license transfers. The title can transfer for the property as soon as the license is transferred.
Do we have anyone representing the current owner?
His sister is here.
Good evening. Here, Bobby's sister, Mr. Conroy's sister, Patricia Conroy Burns. And I'm here to, in behalf of the business and the license to be sold, asking if the license can be reissued. Both Bob and I are medically unable, and have been for the last three years, to operate the business. I had a stroke, and I am medically retired by my doctor. And certainly, my brother also has medical issues. He had back surgery, which is not conducive. He has arthritis. He walks with a walker and a cane. And medically, neither one of us are able to operate the business. And not being able to find anyone competent enough to take our place so that we could oversee it, we have had to close the doors. And I came here today to ask that you consider the transfer of this license. Because of the economy, we've had a hard time trying to sell the business. But now it looks like things are going to go through. But we can't do it without the license.
Is the prospective owner present here this evening?
The buyers?
Yes, they are.
Okay, because an alcoholic beverage license, whoever might be buying it, it's not strictly an automatic transfer from one ownership to the other. They have to clear, I believe, the ABCC. They have to have a clear record and so on in order for them to be holding a license. So that would need to be checked prior to the approval and the sale.
Understandable. Is there, what do you recommend for us to do?
Can they recommend sending the application forms to the ABCC prior to the sale?
The request you have is for more time pending a sale. That's what the request is.
Okay, I'm just trying to give them advice as to what to proceed with.
That's what the...
Okay. What your letter requests is to have more time for the sale, and then you can clarify what would be necessary, what you'd have to accomplish before you could complete the sale and have the license transferred to the new ownership. But there is paperwork that has to be approved by the state. So the letter this evening is asking for an extension of time.
At our last meeting, it was scheduled for cancellation because it hadn't been renewed.
If you have an impending sale, and the people are going to take over, I would think that you would include that in the sale. And what you should do is to pay for, if you have not paid for the license for '09, I would think that you would want to make that whole and secure the license for '09, and then proceed on this additional time that you're asking for with the sale of the business. And whatever you've incurred in the expense of the license, you charge that to the new ownership.
Okay. For 2008, the license has been paid for?
Yeah, 2008 is over.
Right.
2009, we were due at the end of November.
2009 has not been paid.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm suggesting that that be paid.
Okay.
To make it whole. Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. Chairman, I believe there may be some outstanding tax issues that put chieftains on a REAP list. REAP is a Revenue Enhancement Act, and I believe that the collector has advised there may be some outstanding tax issues that need to be resolved, too.
I believe that that is also part of the sale agreement. I'm probably not qualified to answer that question straight out, but having been an absentee for the last 10 years or more, but I will certainly take that up with my brother and perhaps maybe the real estate agents can enlighten you better than I can on what is part of the deal.
She stopped talking because you were talking. That's right. She can continue.
Go ahead and continue.
Okay. Can I turn this back for a moment to the people that know more about the agreement than I do? Would that be okay?
You've asked for additional time to secure a pending sale, so if the board so wishes...
Move to close the hearing?
Motion, okay.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move issue 90-day extension.
Okay, that's a motion to extend 90 days. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you have a 90-day extension to work everything out.
I thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
In behalf of my brother and everyone else from the past. Thank you.
Thank you. The next, 7:30, I think we're just about close enough. We have enclosed, there's a petition for a joint pole location on Laurel Street on the northeast side, approximately 850 west of intersection of North Oxford Street and 40 feet north on existing pole number seven, to place a new pole, 7X. Representative from the petition should be in attendance to have a motion to open a hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, go ahead.
Steve Tricone of Verizon. And basically, what's happened is the customer at the location has since purchased a home, and they had to revamp the electrical system in the house, and therefore, the house, the electrical service needs to be fed from the other side of the house. And per Mass Electric's request, they want us to place that pole so they could feed that house with electricity. And after looking at the piece of property, there's also a vacant lot right next door that if they were to build, we would have to place a pole anyway to feed that. So we're kind of looking at it as a, you know, future perspective to place that pole to feed the current house that's in existence with the new electrical service, and it would give us future growth for the vacant lot that's right next door.
I think what you just said helped me understand. I was looking at the drawing that was submitted, and it had a new pole location, and then it had an arrow that said "future" down to the lower right. And I was afraid you were saying, in the future, we're going to move that pole. All you were showing me with that "future" is that you will service the new house and that vacant lot from that same pole location.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Any other comments from board members, any butters that here that have any comments?
Motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the location.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote.
Thank you very much.
To the chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move up 9G.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There's a vote. Agenda item 9G is the Charter Bill, number H5155. There were several corrections that were made by the, I believe it was by the Senate, wasn't it? Not the House. They aligned on the charter that we sent in. They aligned on the charter that we sent in to... That was voted on by town meeting and the charter that was sent into Boston, asking that these changes be made. The changes, once made, does not have to go back to the town meeting. It can go from us back to submission to the House and the Senate. The House already approved it, so I don't know if it has to go back to them once we do the changes, or it just has to go through the Senate. But the changes that they made in there, if anyone has any questions or went through it over the weekend... Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, what specific changes were made? And how come... I thought at the town meeting, they said that only clerical... They reiterated that, that only clerical changes could be made, and now we're being told that that's not the case?
No. Most of the things are based on their illegal... The illegal portion of the Senate. They've stricken some of the lines. They feel that they're not necessary, or that a seven be a seven and not S-E-V-E-N and so on. Things like that. There isn't anything real major that I saw going through it. Do you have any comments, Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. Chairman, this was received. Town council has endeavored to speak to the person who emailed it back to us and is continuing to do that. And there's some confusion at this point at Senate council's office, I think. The original email came out from an Assistant Secretary of State. He wasn't aware of any concerns. So bottom line is, Bob is still trying to resolve any issues that they might have, Bob Henigan. As the chairman said, a lot of it has to do with pronouns, he and her, she and him, things like that, that would be viewed as clerical or scripters' corrections. Have given a copy of this email to the Charter Commission. Council's advice is, any corrections would only need to be made at this level. There's no requirement to go back and delay it any further with the town meeting action. They could be done here. I would suggest to you, you hold it until we get more information from the town council. He was endeavoring to define the person who's doing the corrections. One thought might have been that some of it came out of Senator Augustus's office. As you know, Senator Augustus is no longer in office. So we're trying to get to the bottom of it.
Mr. Hammond?
Mr. Mitchell came in, I think it was the last meeting, or the meeting prior to, questioning the legality of the sewer section of this. I know we took a vote to postpone, but has that been addressed at all by... That anyone knows of?
No, because this board did not take any action to go forward with that.
The House did not pick up on that, nor the Senate?
I don't... I don't believe so.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, there is on page 13, first paragraph, it makes mention of any conflict with any other special act or law. So it may come into play on page 13, paragraph 1. They're looking for some revisions. As you can see in the middle of the paragraph, this sentence may need some revision. So if they're using that in terms of maybe any conflict with any special act that has been adopted by the legislature on behalf of the town of Auburn, then this would satisfy that requirement. We don't know what they mean by this, and that's why House council needs to be...
Town council.
Give us some guidance as to what their intent was here.
What about page 9, paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, section 308? Some qualification needed here to allow for counsel to be retained for purposes unrelated to town business. Do we know what that means?
No. Complete mystery. It seems to be referring to the fact that departments be allowed to retain counsel for purposes unrelated to town business. I don't think there's any intention on behalf of the Charter Commission to constrict department heads from using counsel for private business. So that is very difficult for us to explain.
It just seems to me like those... You maybe brought up, Mr. Cassino, which in this, these seem like more than just clerical issues that was reiterated at town meeting time and time again. So I question... I'm personally questioning how, you know, at town meeting, we said it over and over again, that only clerical changes can be made. And, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but this looks like a lot more than clerical changes with this and...
Well, just to clarify through the chair, you're correct. Nothing more than clerical could be done in submitting it by the Board of Selectmen. Once it goes to Senate and House counsel, I don't think they feel constrained by a vote of the town meeting. These are changes that have emanated from somewhere, we think, in Senate council. They did not come from the Board of Selectmen or from the town council in submitting legislation.
Yeah, I understand that. But, you know, it was my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that Bob Henigan said, once the town votes, if the Senate rejects any of it, they reject all of it. They don't make recommendations on changes or anything.
And I think that's what he's trying to get to the bottom of.
And this looks like he's making recommendations on changes, including clerical, which... So I'm trying to reconcile both pieces of advice from the same attorney. One's saying only clerical, and then now we're saying, well, maybe there is some latitude for some changes outside of clerical. Because, you know, these two sections alone lead... It's more than clerical. It's not a capital letter.
I don't disagree with that. I think this one, particular one that you're pointing out about qualification needed here to allow for counsel to be retained for purposes unrelated to town business is a complete and utter mystery as to how government, or Charter, or Mass General Law, or an act of the legislature could control how a town employee retains counsel for private affairs.
Mr. Bell, here.
I agree with Charlie on that second one. That is a total mystery. We don't understand what they want on that. As far as the first paragraph there, which I don't have in front of me because I just gave mine to John O'Day, that one is exactly what we have in our Charter now. So I don't understand what their question is when they've already approved it and we've had it in our Charter. And they want... They got a question on that whole paragraph. So, you know, until we can get some... Find out, number one, who did these changes? And number two, the reasoning behind it. So we have to postpone it tonight and then move forward, and then see where we have to go with it, once we get these answers.
Director of Governance?
Yes, and I mean, I would agree with all of this. And there are many other instances as well where they're questioning about sentences requiring clarification and revision. I mean, these are substantive changes. I mean, striking the word "shall" repeatedly. I mean, I know the word "shall" means a lot in contracts for lawyers. These are substantive changes. So I think we also need to understand how do we have to accept these as well? I mean, that's a further question.
Through the chair, if I could, we received this back. We wanted to put it on your agenda. We wanted to make the Charter Commission aware of it as soon as possible, make this board aware of it, and get a report from town council. I can only tell you that he's endeavoring to get to the bottom of it. And as soon as we have that, I would suggest that we hold a special meeting and still not allow any further time to elapse for your vote on any changes you might want to go along with.
And I guess, Mr. O'Connor, to Attorney Henigan, is also just to understand whether we need to abide by these recommendations. Some seem like they're saying this needs to be changed or deleted. In other cases, just asking for clarification. So there's different levels of comment here as well. Because if we have to accept these, then it's a different Charter than the town meeting voted, and we're going to have to communicate that to the voters, which is going to be terribly confusing, that this is not the Charter approved by town meeting, and some of these changes are potentially significant changes.
Well, that last paragraph changes everything, depending on how they rewrite it. Could invalidate a lot of the home rule stuff that we've been put in. But I'd like to know how we have differing opinion from the same attorney. That really concerns me, because I remember what I heard. He said only clerical could go. It was an up or down vote by the Senate, and now it seems like I'm being told that, well, if they're qualifiers, we can let those slide, which is something totally different from what was told at town meeting.
Mr. Westman?
No, we're not going to get anyplace. I think we should continue it for a couple of weeks or whatever time it takes for us to have Charlie or somebody get a hold of the town and, you know, bring it back to us. You know, it would have to be a special meeting, and at least we can get it done and find out.
I don't even think we should put a couple of weeks on it. I think we should have Henigan get in touch with whoever was the originator here, get together and get some clarification and so on, and then schedule a meeting as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Someone will make that in form of a motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item 6, under appointments and resignations, committee vacancies, the board continues to advertise for members for the Traffic Advisory Committee, the Youth Commission, and the Alternate Delegate for Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Committee. No applications for either of these have been received. Agenda item 6B, part-time dispatchers. We have a memo from the police chief, and the recommendations, a motion be in order to... Can we have the chief come forward rather than my reading, going through it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would ask that you make the appointments as requested pending a successful background investigation and all required testing as usual. Both individuals are here. Should you have any questions? But I believe I detailed all the pertinent information in the memo that I directed to you.
In the recommendation, it's to appoint Nicole Clodia and Nicholas Varnos as part-time dispatchers, subject to successful background investigations. And so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Hammond?
How have you gotten by without them?
I'm sorry?
I think it's been, what, two months since we did the guy left, then we promoted? Approximately two months. How have we gotten by without these two positions and the interim?
Well, when we have an open shift, it automatically defaults to overtime. As you may recall, you appointed a part-time dispatcher from Luster. It's a very difficult and complicated job. She worked two shifts and she quit. So it's full-time dispatchers that had to fill any vacancies, whether it was sick vacation or what have you.
In light of the hiring freeze, are these absolutely necessary, in your opinion?
Define absolutely necessary?
We're $2.2 million short of a budget. Cuts will be coming. I have reservations of bringing on new staff when I'll be telling people who've worked here for 25 years that their hours may be cut. It's not against the individuals or anything like that. I understand the need for dispatches. It's a very vital job to kind of like the quarterback of the police department, so to say. We've had discussions probably of their importance to the town. But it's going to be, like I said, $2.2 million is not going to be easy to come, and cuts will be coming. So I'm trying to justify in my head how we hire new and then have people with 20 years on the job ask them to take a pay cut, less hours, or something like that, to offset costs. So with that, I mean...
Well, we have two dispatches working per shift, and we have enough dispatches to cover each and every shift. As soon as someone is out sick, or someone takes some of their contractually... The time that they're contractually entitled to, you take four weeks vacation, multiply that times eight dispatchers, each and every one of those shifts is filled with overtime.
Right.
We budgeted $180,000 for our overtime. We spend an average of $220,000. I think if we want to try and make a dent in the $220,000 mark, it makes sense to fill them with people that are making far less than time and a half, just for that number of weeks. That doesn't include sick days or personal days. So it costs a lot of money to maintain the communication center with the staff that we have.
Mr. Westman?
You know, like, me and Nick don't agree all the times, but on this time here, I have to agree with the chief, because, like you say, the backbone of the police department is the dispatchers. And if you take a look at the dispatchers, I know, because I had some of them come to my house when one of my daughter's baby was sick. And that dispatcher was A-OK. She got the cruisers up there, got the ambulance up there. And it takes a long time to get these dispatchers trained. And if you don't have good dispatches, we can be in a world of trouble. So I agree with the chief. We need what we need.
What about if we... I'll just ask you. I'm not making a motion, but what if we appointed one position and then kind of waited to see what the governor does with expanded night C cuts? Probably, what, within... I mean, we'd have a much better picture in a month or so of what we're looking at.
Less than that.
Less than that, in terms of whether or not we could afford them. I understand the need, but I also understand the need for police, teachers, firefighters, code info. I mean, everybody has a need, and we get the budget here. And, you know, but, you know, I know everybody has the need, but eventually, the cuts are going to be coming, whether you believe it or not. So I think some people don't believe it yet. But so would you be open to an appointment of one and then a delay on one until we have a better information regarding the actual cuts we'll be seeing in the future?
I don't think that I look at part-time dispatches as a position. If I could hire 15, I would. I think I look at part-time dispatches as individuals that are going to save us money. We don't pay them benefits. They come in and work less than 20 hours a week. They help us. They save us money in the long run. By not appointing two, or if I had four that were qualified, I'd be recommending four because it's going to save us four times the money in the long run. I think, to me, it makes no sense to appoint any number fewer than what we can get our hands on that are competent and capable. The union might not be too thrilled with that, but that saves us money.
So no?
No. To me, it defies common sense in my mind.
Mr. Westman?
I make a motion that will go along with the chief's recommendation on dispatches, because I'm a firm believer in good dispatches.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a recommendation to postpone Agenda item 6C. Agenda item 6D, special municipal employee. We have a memo from the school superintendent, Mary Ellen Brunel, requesting that Eric Otten be designated as a special municipal employee for the purpose of providing medical coverage at athletic events. Also enclosed is a memo from the fire chief stating that he has no objection. Motion to designate Mr. Otten as a special municipal employee would be in order.
So moved. Second.
Okay, I was just going to make the motion.
We have a discussion? We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Agenda item 7, licenses and permits. Drain layers license. We have an application from J. Polito and Sons of Shrewsbury for a drain layers license. So a commission has voted to recommend the issuance of the license. Motion be ordered to approve the license, provided that all requirements of the state, town, and any of its departments, boards, commissions have been fulfilled.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Agenda item 8A, the highway surveyor. We have a letter from the highway surveyor concerning the snow equipment account. The board would need to vote to allow the highway surveyor to deficit spend in the snow and ice accounts in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 44, Section 31. We have the letter before us that as of December 26, the account was in deficit of $1,595 as of today. 26th, the account was in deficit of $1,595 as of today. As you know, the way the budget is planned, we do plan to deficit spend because of the way the law, the state law reads. So that's why we're always in the, in the negative.
I move to allow the highway surveyor to deficit spend in the snow and ice accounts in accordance with MGL, Chapter 44, Section 31.
We have a second.
Second.
Discussion?
I don't know if you have these numbers offhand, Mr. Katsunovich, but you have the, you probably don't, but the total snow fund expense last year and the year prior to, and what was budgeted for this year?
I can tell you, I believe we transfer a year-end for fiscal '08, $237,000. We overspent the snow and ice account by, we budgeted 140, 141. In '09, we increased that budget by roughly $45,000 to 180. I'd be happy to run a report and give you an update, although it may not reflect services that have been provided within the past week or two, because those invoices have not been processed and paid through our office. But I'd be happy to give you an updated report as of a, as of today and provide that to you tomorrow.
Follow-up to that is, can you explain the deficit spending process and how that works for me as well as other people? Like, your deficit spend, your budget 180, I think annually, we probably spend closer to 350, maybe 400. Is that fair? I mean, we'd never spend less than 300 in any given year on snow removal.
All depending on the year, all depending on the severity of the storm, all depending on whether there's a FEMA or MEMA reimbursement that has happened in the past. I can tell you that some of the expenses that we have paid will qualify under the FEMA and MEMA application. We have not received that money yet. That deficit does reflect those expenses. So in essence, we really haven't overspent yet. We just don't know what that reimbursement is going to be. But because we've already exceeded those line items appropriations, we're forced to bring this to the board. Board has to authorize to spend an excess of appropriation under 4431. During the course of the year, or at the end of the year, to the extent that those line items are overspent, you can either cover that through any other available source that may be available, or the board would have the ability to raise that deficit on next year's tax recap sheet in the event that those funds are not available in the current fiscal year. So come June 30th, let's just say we have a quarter of a million-dollar deficit. We don't have any funds within the operating budget to cover that, then our projected deficit going into next year at this point would increase by a quarter of a million dollars.
Just want to add to Mr. Hammond, that a year ago, when we were preparing the '09 budget, we looked at the history of the snow and ice accounts. And as you know, first of all, there's a premise that you are allowed to deficit spend there as opposed to anyplace else. But we didn't think it truly reflected the history of what had been spent, so we tried to increase it. It was a significant increase, not in terms of snow and ice, though, in terms of taking money from other departments, other expenses, and allocating it towards snow and ice. I think we should try to bump it up every year as revenues allow, so it more accurately reflects what the true cost of snow and ice fighting is. The last point I want to make is this December 26 memorandum would be inclusive of that ice event of the 12th of December, which there is a meeting shortly. MEMA is hosting a meeting on reimbursements, and we'll know what we might be entitled to at that point.
Hammond?
When I set to run for this office, I sat down with just about every department head, including the highway surveyor, and went over budgets and any information they wanted to give me. It's my understanding that when we present the budget, and if I'm wrong, correct me, please, that when we present the budget to town meeting, it's balanced. But it's really only balanced on paper. And the reason why is because we all know that we funded that snow budget by, what, 50% of what we know on an average storm will use. Every year that I've been paying attention, we always deficit spend it. So we can't say, well, this year is bad. Well, every year seems to be bad, so how come we haven't gotten up to the average? With that, we have two options. We can take from other accounts, rob Peter to pay Paul, or we can continue on the deficit spending. Either way, it doesn't sound like a sound long-term financial plan, because although when we look at the accounts, we have all those police positions that previously weren't filled, money allocated to them, and on paper, at the beginning of the year, that money's there, everyone and everyone who's paid attention to that budget knows that half of that money is going to go to cover the deficit of the snow account at the end of the year, because it's got to come from somewhere. You do this over and over again, and now we're finding ourselves in a financial shortfall, whereas if we actually had a true budget that did not require a deficit spending, we probably wouldn't be facing a $2.2 million shortfall. I don't think it's, I mean, I understand why it's done. I get the concept. It's the only account we can deficit spend in. So if we look at the past three years' history, and I believe looking at last year, everyone was over $300,000. I think we appropriated 141, 850. This is going, I mean, I'm remembering from a year ago, but I think it was 141, 850, boom, 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 three years in a row. And every year, the account spent over $300,000, which means, even on the average winner, we're $160,000 deficit spending. So where's that money coming from? Well, we didn't fill the position of this. We didn't spend money on that, so we'll do a transfer at the end of the year and make that account whole. Am I wrong?
At the beginning of the year, those positions, whether it be police or any other vacant position, are funded with the intent of filling those positions.
With the intent of filling them. But, and I understand that. But at the end of the year, we didn't fill, so we take that money and we offset the deficit in the snow account, which we knew, I mean, you can ignore and pretend you didn't know, but a year of three years in a row of over $300,000 of spending, and we're level funding the snow account for three years in a row at about 50 to 60% of what the average of last three years were, you know you're going to deficit spend. It's like putting 100 bucks away for a car payment that you know is going to be 200 bucks every month, and then acting surprised at the end of the year when you have to take money out of your food budget to cover the difference.
30%.
So we'll be leaving. Now, when I made my recommendations, just to move on, when I made my recommendations to identify the open positions that were not filled this year and roll that money over to next year to help offset next year's proposed or projected deficit, some of that money will be used to cover the deficit.
Any money that is available at the end of this year cannot be rolled into next year. The law does not provide you. You have to spend that money between July 1st and June 30th, unless you have a liability that you incurred as of June 30th but have not paid that. You don't have the ability to roll that over and use it for next year's appropriations.
So where does it go?
It closes out to free cash.
And then that money comes back in, though?
It may come back in if, in fact, you have free cash to the extent that you're allowed to spend it.
Right, so it gets certified and then it will roll back in eventually.
There have been years when we had negative free cash.
So, but eventually, if you have a surplus, it will get rolled into free cash, and eventually we'll come back around. And, I mean, we have free cash at $1.2 million now.
Correct.
Where did that come from?
That came primarily from estimated receipts that came at $600,000 stronger than anticipated.
So when that money comes around, we get it, we eventually, I mean, if we, I'm missing something here. If we tax and we appropriate money to this position at $40,000 and we don't spend a penny of that, where does that money go at the end of the year?
That closes out to fund balance and ultimately ends up in a certification of free cash, whatever that means.
So let's assume that everything was budgeted. We have $40,000 left over. There's no deficits in any account. That $40,000 goes to free cash for certification. Once certified, we'll come back into the revenue source.
Right, but it's offset by a number of different components that feed free cash. It's not strictly just surplus appropriation. You could fall shy on your collections, whether it be state estimated receipts.
So that's what I'm saying, assume all that comes through. I mean...
The receivable asset, if your collections are down, that comes into the calculation of free cash.
Right.
So in other words, if our collection rate goes down because of the, for whatever reason, because of the fiscal constraints of the economy, that's going to be a reduction against your free cash.
Right, because we have to offset those deficits. And what we're doing by doing the snow, snow account, in my opinion, is just adding another deficit to be offset. I mean, am I wrong in saying that? That the deficit needs to be offset by our own...
You don't have to sweep those surplus appropriations against that deficit. You could choose to raise it on next year's recap sheet. But because it's available, and we don't know whether it's going to be available or not, we talked about the surplus for those positions at 350, and a portion of that money, if those positions are not filled, could be used as an offset against the snow and ice deficit. It does not have to be.
But it generally is.
But I think you would want to clean that up, so you're not relying on taxation or some other funding source next year with the uncertainty.
But you don't want to roll it in. But my question is, why don't we just budget enough forward from the beginning, other than just expect to deficit spend and then roll it into free cash and then offset, or use money that was allocated for positions and then roll it in to offset? Why don't we just do it right and just budget 100% for snow and budget, so there is no deficit spending, so it doesn't kill Darlene's budget? And that, because every year, generally due to deficit spending in the snow budget, we end up in a spending freeze. Not this year because of extenuating circumstances, but every year, generally, not this year, like I said, we go into a deficit spending in, in, in snow and ice, and then everybody gets shut down. Please fire everyone. And I'll tell you right now, not being a columnist, if you look at the budget and you look at the last three years and what we appropriate, we will deficit spend, forcing us into a spending freeze eventually.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of points. First, the spending freeze went in before the snow.
No, I'm not talking this year. I'm talking prior years.
I just want to make sure that the public understands that.
Yeah, I'm talking prior years.
That happens long before.
Right.
The last point I want to make is, we put a 40, roughly a $45,000, $47,000 increase that we brought into this body a year ago for FY '09. That's a 30-some-odd, roughly 30%, that can give you the precise increase, in that line item. I think that you are absolutely right that that line item should better reflect the reality of what occurs by experience in this community. But all I could afford to do, and not easily, was jack it up by roughly 30%. If we could do that again, I would prefer to do that so that it more realistically reflects what the needs are for snow and ice, and not have a false, what I would consider to be a false number. On the other side of the equation, it's the only line item where we have, under Mass. General Law, that flexibility. But if we can grow that annually, I would prefer to grow it. To go beyond that $47,000, I would have had to look directly at a payroll account when we did this a year ago for FY '09, the current year.
That's, you summed it up perfectly. At the beginning of the year, you can look at the payroll account and say, you know, we can't afford to fund this payroll position because we have to fund the snow and ice. Now, we don't do that. Right now, we say, well, we're going to leave the position funded. Let's see where that snow and ice deficit spans, and then we'll take the money out at the end of the year. It's the same result. It's just a matter of...
But we're not, we don't hold on the hirings of any jobs pending the weather. That doesn't happen. I can assure you of that.
No, we go into spending freezes pending the weather.
I know where that has happened, but that has not been our practice.
I understand that, but we do go into town-wide spending freezes because of the weather.
We go into town-wide spending freezes usually in the last quarter or from the second half of the fiscal year. And on occasion, it is because of, of what has happened with snow and ice accounts. But there have been other considerations as well. We have had vacancies held in some departments because of, of large legal bills or large litigation bills per that department. So some of those have been swept, some of those budgeted but unfilled positions have been swept to cover legal expenses in the past, and the board has been part of that.
I understand that. I just want people at home to get, understand what we're doing here. At the beginning of the year, the budget we're setting, and that's snow and ice, it's designed to deficit spend. So people should not be surprised come this time of year, hey, sometimes even earlier than now, that we're deficit spending in there, because we are underfunding that budget.
And if we could increase it another 30-some-odd percent in the budget preparation now, I'd be more than happy to do it, to over a four, five-year period, get it to where it more accurately reflects what Auburn's history has been in those accounts. And I think that would be to the highway surveyors' benefit as well.
I agree. I think she gets handcuffed. I think all, all departments are getting handcuffed by the way we're managing that account, because once this freeze goes in, you know, not this year. This year is a totally different animal. But, I mean, at the end of the day, we're still taking salary and we're paying that snow.
But none of those freezes, now or in the past, have ever had an effect on public safety with respect to snow and ice fighting or police and fire. And even the current freeze, the POs that I do, if a truck needs work on a blade or hydraulics or whatever is, is getting done.
I, yeah, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, at the end of the year, you know, the end result is the same, but we're lying to ourselves at the beginning of the year so we feel good. That's how I feel about it, because...
But I want to say that that number cannot be corrected in one fiscal year. Physically impossible to correct it and show what it accurately reflects in one fiscal year. It can be done incrementally, and it can be done over a period of time, and that's what I'd like to do.
Dr. Rubens?
Two questions. One is of the money that's been expended on the rentals. Is any of that going to be reimbursed because of the, was it December 12th storm?
Mr. Rubens, what do you mean by rentals? Which...
So, so this is for snow equipment rentals, right? That's the way it was, that's the way it was characterized.
That's for deficit as of 12/26.
Would that, would that cover some of that storm?
Yes.
So some of that will be reimbursed, hopefully?
That's correct. The monies that were put in FEMA are unknowing what they're actually going to pay. Equipment itself was close to $17,000 and overtime was close to $10,000.
Okay. Very good. And so that, so some of that will be recouped, hopefully. And then secondly, you characterize this as the rentals. Does this include then the rest of, how's the rest of your operation in terms like sand and salt? That's not in deficit yet?
Salt is in a deficit as of this tax law, approximately $4,000.
Darlene, could you come up to the podium? Because the question that I asked you earlier this week to have the information this evening, we're getting into.
As of this last storm, so prior to this weekend, salt is in a deficit approximately about $4,000. Sand is not. Sand is, is probably about 90% spent. And equipment rental, which would be private, high rates for plowing, is right now probably about $1,000 short.
And how are we doing on overtime?
Overtime right now is fine.
Okay, so that's basically the numbers that I had asked you for earlier this week.
That is correct. Total is close to about $7,000.
Right. What we would like, what I would like is to have each meeting, you don't have to be here, but we would like an update as to where we stand each meeting, so we can let the public know where we stand.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we need a vote on that.
Okay, yeah, we had a motion in a second. We had discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote. Agenda item nine, under new business, municipal project submittal, the federal economic recovery bill. We have a copy of the submittal. Just give you, those who weren't aware, last week, we received a request from Lieutenant Governor Murray of a list of things that we would like to submit for, based on the Obama's recovery bill, and monies that would be coming forward to the state to set things in process for, to make out a supposed wish list, if you wanted, maybe a short explanation as to what it might be. You have that in front of you this evening. And that listing had to be in. It came to us, I believe it was late Friday. We didn't get it till... We didn't get it till Monday morning. And they were looking for answers back by, was it Wednesday or Thursday morning?
Wednesday.
Which was before our scheduled meeting. So the list has already been submitted to the State House. And it's for us to, to vote and confirm or, or to authorize the, the list that went in that I had to, to sign on Thursday. If you might have read in the paper this evening, Worcester submitted for $350 million. Our listing, I believe, was somewhere in the vicinity of, what was it, 117? 118? $118,000.
No, million, million, million.
Uh, yeah, 18 million, sir, excuse me. I left a zero.
A big one, a big one.
So we would need a motion to, to approve that list. Or if anyone wants to discuss what was on that list, the recommendation was made by not only town administration, but the various department heads. Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, for the board's benefit and the other members, walk through the process and then I want to acknowledge the work of some people. This was sent out by Lieutenant Governor Murray's office on the Friday after the first. We received it after a Monday morning meeting at 11 o'clock. We had a department heads meeting right away. All the municipal departments, school superintendent. And work commenced on compiling the documentation immediately. As you all know, there was a, somewhat of a storm scheduled for last week. With all the departments being diverted with all sorts of activities, this was a major priority and was completed on time. It was electronically transferred to Lieutenant Governor, to Representative Frost, Senator Moore. And hard copies were delivered Thursday as well to the various offices. As the chairman said, well, as I would clarify some of the chairman's comments, this is a, a statement of documented need from the community to the state. The plan that is currently being worked on anticipates that federal funds would be allocated to the state for the Commonwealth to be involved with the disbursement as opposed to directly from the Fed to the community. So they asked for that assessment of need. I don't characterize these as grant applications, but needs. And a total of $118, $279,622, approximately 25 projects. We advised Lieutenant Governor's office that the board would meet Monday night and we would send a confirming vote down to his office on Tuesday.
I move that we authorize that confirming message to be sent with our thanks to all the team that pulled us together so quickly.
Second.
Discussion. As before we take the vote, there was an awful lot of work that went into this by, by the administrative portion of the, of the, of the town as well as all the department heads. And we want to thank everyone for being comfortable and getting all the figures in in time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it was a vote. Gift acceptances. From the dog officer for Sunshine Club Medical Recovery at St. Vincent's Hospital in memory of Mary Granlund, $50 for the kennel renovation project. For Council on Aging, Home Depot, Washington Street, Washington Street. Auburn, $300 for holiday decorations to be purchased at Home Depot. For the Council on Aging, George Fornia, 26. Be the street. And Webster, $200 for trees and wreaths, wreath clips. The Council on Aging, Mike McNamara, $25 to the grocery voucher for elders. From the library, Ryan J. Steltzer and Mer, Merlin Glazer, $250 to the miscellaneous gift fund. And from the library, from Betty Peterson of Worcester, $10 for the gift book fund account. Do we have a motion to accept with gratitude? Another second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it was a vote. Gender item nine C, the gas and diesel bid. I don't believe we have anything in on that as yet.
Mr. Chairman, the bids were received today. We received one bid. At this point, I believe it to be non-responsive and I anticipate we'd have to go back out.
Any comments from board members? No. Okay, gender item nine D, tax rate increase requested by Dr. Grubbs. Dr. Grubbs?
Yes, and I thank you, Mr. Chair, for putting this back on the agenda. You know, as we've discussed this evening on a, on a couple of different occasions, the budget's extremely tight. I think it's unprecedented what we're experiencing right now. And like every community in the area, as you read the paper on a daily basis, I'm sort of maintaining an inventory of some of the discussions underway in other communities where they're talking about cuts just to accommodate the projected state cuts. And I'm trying to get my hands around and trying to understand the wisdom of Auburn leaving untapped, you know, $737,000, a budget resource. You know, as we're looking at this revenue shortfall and how this is greatly compounding, I think the challenge that this community is going to face providing basic services. We're not, not talking about level, we're not talking about growing, but the most basic services. So I'm, I'm hoping that we can have a continued discussion of this issue. As I brought this up once before, I, I think a lot of people were surprised that the, the savings from this freeze amounts to less than $7 a month for the average homeowner. And as I talk to residents and as they're looking at where they're likely to be paying for this one way or the other, as you look at other communities, where they're looking at, you know, restricting or closing libraries. And there was just an article in, in The Telegram last week of how the usage of library increases during tough economic times, where, where people look to the library to make up their needs that they funded on their own. Restricting the hours of the senior center, where school systems are looking at athletic fees, increased busing fees. That $7 savings is going to very quickly disappear. We're going to end up paying more in, in the long run. And I've, I've been doing some research because I'm, I'm trying to figure out what drove this decision. And I'm, and I'm looking at, and I was expecting to see that, you know, people are having, you know, and I, I don't mean to minimize the strain that we all feel in our, our home budgets. But, you know, when you look at the data in terms of tax receipts for 2008 to see if there was a spike in delinquencies, and we're as good, if not better, than we were the previous year. And we only have 12 outstanding delinquent bills from 2007. So there doesn't seem to be, you know, a, a, a real problem on that front. And this is across the entire residential, commercial, industrial group. Also looking at foreclosures in Auburn in terms of looking at and, and seeing, is it higher here than in other communities? And in fact, we're in a, in a better position than most of our surround, surrounding communities. And then you look at that, and even there, not to minimize, and I sympathize, and my heart goes out to anybody who's, you know, who's facing a foreclosure on their, on their home. But it's not likely $7 a month is, is going to get them out of that hole. But I look at the pain that this $737,000 is going to cause the town workers where, you know, we've talked about letting go already this evening. We've talked about letting people go. And for a town worker to lose their job, they're likely to lose their home. We, we know if you lose in a two-income family or one-income family, one of those incomes, you're going to have a heck of a time making that mortgage payment. So I, I'm very much concerned about, you know, the burden that that's going to have on the, the laid-off workers in this community and how that actually will have a significant impact on foreclosures. Also looking at, I know in my own budgeting, we're reminded constantly that the, a layoff is not a, a net gain. You just don't realize those salaries. For every 10 people you lay off, you have to lay off an additional three people approximately to pay for the increased cost of unemployment costs. And, and, and we've borne those costs in the past. And then you have to tack on to that, on top of that is, not to pick on the chief here, but the example that he gave earlier, is that in essential services of highway, police and fire, we, we will bear an additional cost of overtime. So as we budget and we try to deal with making up that, with that additional $737,000 shortfall and, and looking at making that up in layoffs, we have to think about that very carefully in terms of our employment compensation cost, the increase there, as well as how it might impact, and it's going to be very hard to plan for overtime cost anticipating that, that possibility. The second point that I, I wanted to raise is another one that I don't know the answer to. But I, I know, and this is only happening in cities, that most communities are taxing near or at the cap in terms of towns. Where you see them under the cap, Worcester, for example, is $11 million under their cap. Worcester right now is very much concerned about how that's going to be viewed by the state as they're looking for additional state resources when they're not taxing to their potential. So my question is, how is that going to impact as we're going to the state right now, asking them to reexamine the formula? And is Auburn being funded properly by the state in, in Chapter 70 when we're leaving money untapped in terms of local resource? So Worcester, I know, is having a serious discussion about that right now. And, and again, it's unknown about what that impact is. But I, I think it is certainly something, something at the very least that we, we need to examine. And when you look at that $737,000 cap and you compare Auburn's total budget to the budget in Worcester, proportionally, we're actually leaving more money on the table than Worcester in terms of the size of the budgets. And then thirdly, I, I, I looked at, again, we, we talked about savings of $7 a month for the residential. Where we take a serious hit is on the res, on the commercial industrial. And, and just to give you one example, you take the five top-valued commercial industrial properties in this town. The tax savings they're, they're realizing this year by not having the 2.5% increase. For those five alone, for those five alone is almost $63,000. That's enough to fund about 1.5 police officers or teachers. That's what we're leaving on the table here. So as we're looking at cuts and what those five businesses alone are not contributing this year to the cost of running this town, we're really talking about 1.5 people. Okay? That, that's, that's a real figure. And then, you know, as we look at the commercial side of it, the commercial industrial side of it, one issue, and I'll bring it up just as an example, but one thing that I'm always monitoring, we ran into this in the last recession in 2001, but it's a cost that we need to be anticipating in the budget moving forward this year, is homeless vouchers, hotel vouchers for the hotels. We're very vulnerable to this because of the large number of hotels that we have in this community. Right now, the state homeless shelters are at capacity. They reached capacity last fall. Right now, the state is housing 500 families in hotels. 77 of them in Worcester, okay? Worcester is nearing their capacity. Where do you think they're going to go next? So, and, and again, I'm very sympathetic to the plight of the homeless and I, and I do believe they should have housing. But this is another one of those unfunded mandates. The state will give the hotel the voucher for the room, okay? But they will not cover any of the costs borne by the community. And those costs can be significant, significant because if there's children involved in those families, we're responsible either for educating them or if they choose for the first six months, if that family comes from Lawrence, we're responsible for half of their transportation costs to Lawrence every day so that they could continue schooling in their home community. This is something we should have our eye on. It's something that creeps up on us. It crept up on us the last time. And then we found ourselves trying to scurry about, trying to figure out how we were going to pay for those bills. The hotel costs are going to be covered. They're, they're making their money. They're filling those vacant rooms, which they have plenty of right now. And, and I think we know from the last time, and chief, not to put you on the spot, but the number of calls to those hotels go up on a regular basis with disturbances and fights in the evening and so on and so forth. Once again, we, we bear the cost of that expense. But these hotels will not pay a tax increase this year to offset these costs. So that's just one example of, of many that we, we need to take a look at. And then fourth item that I, I'd like to raise for discussion is, do we really want to balance this budget completely when we have this opportunity, it is $737,000, on the backs of our town employees? Myself, I'm bothered by this. I've negotiated the contracts with many people in this community. I know they don't make a lot of money. And to ask them to give up some of that, to balance the budget when we have other options available to us, I don't think is fair. And that's for the average worker. I have a greater, as great a concern, I guess I should say, that we also risk, and we should be mindful of this going into this, that we risk losing some of our most talented employees who could go to greener pastures. There are jobs open at all managerial levels around this state. And to lose that talent, we, we're in a situation right now where I think we have very, very fine managers in most of our positions. And I think we, we've seen the cost of not having good managers in the past. I would hate to lose any of those individuals because we're not funding their departments properly the way we can. So I, I'd hate to preside over a talent drain over the next couple of years. And then finally, it's been pointed out to me by town meeting members, ultimately, town meeting can allocate this money. It's, it's town, town meeting ultimately that sets the spending. So we can go through this period of, of budget uncertainty for the next few months, you know, planning for these contingencies. And then on town meeting floor, this money can be spent, which throws the whole thing in disarray that we're scurrying about. Pink slips are going out in the mail. Do we want to wait to that last moment to, to resolve these issues when we can reopen that discussion now and, 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 and think about whether, in fact, given the pressures that we face, is, is this a, a wise decision? So I, I'll pause and I, and I, and I hope that, you know, I'm trying to understand where the other three board members are coming from on this in terms of addressing some of these issues.
Go ahead, you want to go?
No, I just wanted to make one point. You know, some of the things, you know, your points you make are valid. But I think in, in stating that we're going to be penalized because we're not taxing to the max is a scare tactic. And I don't think we have any history proving that because you're not, you aren't taxing to the max, that you, you're going to pay a penalty as a result of it. And that shouldn't be used, and it's been used in other instances before. I think we should be held more wise and more prudent by the state in the, in the, in the control of our monies and expenditure of our dollars by not maxing to the, to the dollars that are available to us and not having any leeway one way or the other in the, in our expenditures. But some of the other points that you do make, you know, are valid and they're, they're a problem that are going to be facing other towns and cities throughout the state. It's not, it's, we're, we're in, in an area now that we haven't faced probably in our lifetime or our parents' lifetime, what we're going to be facing. And the matter of this additional 2.5, half-tax to the levy limit is not going to solve our problem. Nowhere near is, is it going to solve the problem. It's just a small Band-Aid to, to, to some of the dollar issues that are facing our, our residents. I've had several people talk to me in the last week or so in getting their tax bills for the last quarter. And a lot of them were complaining of the gigantic increases in their bills. And there were some, yes, that had decreases in their bills because every three years, we taxed at 100%. And then there's, I believe, only 10% that are taxed on an annual basis that are updated. So...
Mr. Grossman, if I could just respond. I, and I, because I wouldn't want to leave the wrong impression because I was very clear when I was talking about the issue of taxing to the levy. I don't want to use it as a scare tactic. All I'm saying is that Worcester is having that discussion right now. And, and, and they're much more forgiving with cities. more forgiving with cities than they are with towns in this particular area. That's the only point that I was making there. And then, the other point is, when we're looking at a total, what, a $2.2 million shortfall projected right now? I don't consider $737,000 of that to be a Band-Aid. I see that to be a significant portion of that. You know, do the math, it's a very significant portion of that total deficit. It's not a Band-Aid.
Mr. Hammond?
My turn. Through the chair, Mr. Grivens makes some valid points. Top five businesses were, what, $64,000? I bet you if we pulled the five highest-paid employees, maybe one lives in Auburn, pays Auburn taxes. I bet you if we pulled the top 10 highest-paid employees, maybe two live in Auburn, pay Auburn taxes. In terms of state aid, I understand the Worcester comparison, because it's a good comparison, because we're dual taxed, and we tax just like Worcester. Not like towns, but we tax like a city, which questions why the charter doesn't have a mayoral system like the city of Worcester. If we're going to be a city, we might as well just be a city, not act like a town, tax like a city. So based on our dual taxation, well, one, that's why it's $64,000 and not $30,000 to the businesses, because we're dual taxed. But, two, if they look at dual tax rates similarly, then I would expect the same thing. Furthermore, with the tax, I mean, we've gone over this over and over, 14.86 is our net tax rate. If we were a single-class rate right now, that would be our net tax rate. Nobody else is near that. If we went to a single rate, we'd be at $14.86 per thousand. Every other town is at 11. So even by not raising our revenue 2.5%, we're still being taxed per 1,000, like 30%, 20% to 30%. I don't have the numbers on me, but about 20% to 30% higher than any other town around us who have single tax rates, assuming we were a single tax rate. So even though we're at 2.5% higher, we're not raising our taxes 2.5% higher, we're still paying like 20% more in taxes as a town, as a community. We've never gotten an answer as to why. Why is that? Why is it? Is it a dual tax rate? Everyone says no, but nobody can prove it. But the only definitive difference between Auburn and all the other communities is we have a dual tax rate. But everyone will say that's not why, but nobody will say, give me any proof as to why it is, why, or explain that to me. So I think until we get on level with what other towns are paying, why should we keep raising our taxes 2.5%? Because we'll just grow faster because of the compounding effect. That has nothing to do with the current situation.
Before you go on, with reference to that, we have requested through state representative and state senator for a meeting to be held. We're trying to schedule it, I believe, for sometime this month.
I heard that one.
To get together and to get an explanation as to why, and get some answers to this.
That would be great.
We've requested it several times.
Several times.
Got nothing.
Furthermore, we're going through a process here where it's very hard, and, you know, right before dawn is always darkest, I believe the saying is. We just received a packet from just about every department head, which is probably why most of them are here, identifying what they could cut out of a budget. And it's greatly appreciated. Some people hit the 5%. Everybody, I think, said why it would be very difficult and where it would hurt. So this is all information we received because of these impending budgets. Otherwise, I don't think this has ever been put together before. If you could cut, where do you cut? And how long you been here, Bob? Have you ever seen a report like this? No. Well, we have identified places to cut. 5%? No. But have people identified things they could cut if they had to? Yes. Have they also identified how it would affect their departments? Yes. Does the Board of Selectmen as a whole, the town administration as a whole, have a better understanding of all these departments, their budgets, how they're affected, where they see cuts can be made? This is all information that is just as valuable as the tax increase that's being proposed once again. This process needs to go through because this information needs to be filed. This would have never been done if we just increased taxes 2.5%. I guarantee it. Wouldn't have, we wouldn't have it. I proposed this. We got it. It's a great tool, and we'll use this in closing the gap. The gap is $2.2 million. I've spent several meetings with Mr. Katsunovich. I think we've identified $600,000 that could be easily, I don't want to promise anything, identified to close the gap a little bit without raising taxes. The only alternative I've heard from anybody else on this board is raise taxes. I believe Bill mentioned once a meal tax, but beyond that, I haven't heard of anybody flipping over the rocks and looking outside the box to figure out a way to make this happen other than, let's just raise taxes. Okay, let's raise taxes. We're still 1.5 million short. Now what? You're still going to lose the management. You're still going to lose good people. You're still going to have to cut hours. It's still a huge cut, which is why I voted no against all these spending initiatives and new positions over the last three months, which is why, over three months ago, I asked for this report. This needs to be an ongoing process. In terms of jobs, if you have one, let me know, because I need one. And I don't know about other people in town, but I'm sure, there's not many jobs out there, especially in my field of finance, because they're gone. I've created a list of other alternatives outside of raising taxes. Raising taxes should be the last resort, not the first. Some people came up with some innovative stuff in here that I would have never thought of. I, for one, will not take a salary next year. I've made that pledge, and I'll continue to make that pledge. The only four people in this town of 700 employees, whether it's for the kids or public safety, that have actually said they won't take a pay raise or anything, is myself, you, Mr. Valentine, Chief White. But it's for the kids. It's for public safety. But I want my personal vehicle. I just, you know, I'd like to see the work together. With the $600,000 identified by myself, this is through no sale of land either, which we've also compiled a list of property owned by the town which could be sold, which town administration is currently looking at, that could generate some serious revenues. This is defunct property. These are slivers, some of them, some of them are worthless, some of them have value. Some of them we didn't even know we owned. Okay? This would have never been done had this process not taken place. We'll be rolling into the GIC, and when we do, that's a potential $1.3 million savings. I understand it will not help the budget cut on this budget. That is true. But if we can identify and know that we will experience those savings, and FY '11, between the cuts identified between Mr. Katsunovich and I, Mr. O'Connor, as well as some other maneuvering, and knowing that free cash has come in, we're almost there. But the question is, do the employees want to take the GIC? Well, yeah, there's cause for concern. There's uncertainties with it. I understand. It's not portable, could be more expensive. But to the employees, if your option is, look at the person next year and tell them they're gone, or accept GIC, what do you choose? My last and final point is, I don't know who Mr. Grivens works for, but I work for the town of Auburn, the residents. Sorry, but I don't work for the employees. I work for the residents of Auburn, and I represent the residents of Auburn, not the employees with special interests. I understand town meeting can go ahead and increase to $750,000, $30,000, whatever it is. And if they so do it, then so be it. I hope they're very loud and vocal about their votes. I hope it's not one of those things where it's a special interest, you know, making hand signals from the table, telling people what to do, caucus out in the hallway, which I've seen in two town meetings that I've been to. I hope it's a true up-and-down vote, and I hope they identify themselves as to who did do that, so they too can be held to the same standard we have to be. And I hope they stay the whole meeting and not just make that vote and vote on other things that are special interest to them and leave, which I've seen as well. That's my response to Mr. Grivens. If he has a response, I'd be glad to give him the last word, but...
See if anybody else wants to... Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out to Mr. Hammond, we did have a very, I think, productive meeting, but that is not the first time that 5% cuts have been reflected in a budget request. It may be the first time they've come to the body, but we have gone through in the past where we've asked department heads to come to my hearing with two budgets. And one is a fallback position, and one is what they preferred. We have done that internally previously. It perhaps is the first time it has been requested by a board member, and it's certainly the first time it's been supplied, but they have been done at administrative hearings when we go through the budget process. In fact, when budgets have been more or less normal, revenue years have been more or less normal, there are many occasions where a department head is sent back to the drawing boards and revisit it under normal circumstances. But I can recall distinctly the first Romney, the first year the Romney administration, when NC expanded, was asked for and was granted. And it seems to me that was the first year we asked for two sets of budget recommendations from the department heads to come into the hearings. So we have done it before.
Dink.
Mr. Valentine? Since the chair was good enough, and other members good enough, to allow us to speak again about an issue that I, for one, was in the minority in because I don't think it's the right thing to cut this additional 730, oh, I shouldn't call it cut this, to not raise this additional $737,000. I would just like to state that for me, if we were just focusing on the problem that we have to handle no matter what, which is 1.5 million, we're focusing on the fact that we know the economy's down, so that we have to plan on state aid being down 10%. We know the additional healthcare expenses and so forth are costing us more, so we know we have a $1.5 million problem. It seemed, I believe, that there would be better focus and a better targeting of how we're going to reach that 1.5 million if we would just go after that 1.5 million. And when you make it even larger by saying we're not going to allow a 2.5% increase, it becomes, you know, very difficult to imagine how it's going to work and still maintain services. And so we do end up having long speeches about what it's going to take and whether, you know, pitting each other about whether we're for the employees or we're for the town. I mean, the fact is, I think we're all here, and we all would spend every, all of these Monday nights because we care about the town. And in fact, we're just approaching it different ways about trying to make sure we're doing the right thing. And we can have different opinions moving forward, but I, for one, would just like us to be, as quickly as we can, to be focused on the cuts that we absolutely have to make at 1.5 million, because I think at that point, there's no longer any disagreement. I think everybody in town knows we have to cut 1.5 million. And everybody would be, my guess is, would be quicker to come on board and add to what they could possibly do to help us cut 1.5 million. As soon as the Board of Selectmen independently says, we recommend not raising any more taxes, and therefore we have to come cut 2.2 million, what's the incentive for everyone to come right on board there when you're, you know, when you're turning your back on a possibility of 737,000, which means, you know, a large number of jobs is what it'll end up meaning within the town? So, again, gracious of the board to allow particularly minority opinions to be voiced again, and I appreciate that. I do wonder, I do ask the question, when we will revisit this, in terms of when the selectmen will be involved in the process again? I hope the answer to that is not on town meeting floor. I'd like to know if there's any way that we can, because typically, the Board of Selectmen just forwards a budget to the Finance Committee, and then we don't have a lot of interaction with the Finance Committee before town meeting floor. I'd like to know if there's some way we could agree to work together to have some more collaboration happen before town meeting floor, so that we're not there with town meeting members looking to us for guidance, the majority of the Board of Selectmen saying, just cut down to 2.2 million, the Finance Committee coming with whatever work they go through with all the many, many meetings they're going to have Wednesday night after Wednesday night after Wednesday night, the schools having their unique independent view of what they'd like town meeting to do, and us not looking like town leadership, but rather looking like three separate boards and just kind of all kind of bantering for the town meeting's vote. So I'd like to ask if the chair could at least try to facilitate some discussions with Finance as we move forward, and perhaps with the schools, so that we can look cohesive and collaborative before we get to that May town meeting.
Before we make comments, didn't we go through this as far as having, like, the school committee wanted to have a, you know, a meeting along with us and the Finance Committee, not a committee, but a, just a, I don't know what you would call it.
Working group.
A working group and so on, and we were advised by council that that was not permissible, that it couldn't be done. As an individual, you know, one of us could attend a meeting and bring it back to, you know, bring it back to other board members, but I don't see any other way of doing it other than us having a formal joint meeting.
Joint meeting.
So, I should be clearer about that than, you know, I'm not looking to do anything behind the scenes. I'm not looking for any special groups to be set up. I'm looking to have collaboration, meaning that we'd ask the Finance Committee, even though they're very busy, once they get an understanding of what they'd like to do, that we ask for a joint meeting so we can understand their rationale, understand what they're going to come forward with. Now, likely, some of these last-minute decisions are not made till the night of town meeting. So I'd be looking for, you know, setting a deadline, say, a month before town meeting, to say, look, is the Finance Committee willing at that point, a month before town meeting, to get together with the Board of Selectmen and have a joint meeting and walk through their rationale for what their recommendation is so that we could understand it? If, for some reason, it turned out to be requesting that, requesting town meeting that some amount of taxes will be raised, we would at least hear that and understand that and have time to determine, you know, where we, where we as a board would stand on this.
Just before anyone makes any comments, one thing that I would suggest, perhaps, Bill, you was a board member, and your wife who was on the school committee, historically, we haven't had figures from them until the last minute. Perhaps it'll be different this year, and we'll have figures sooner, so that the Finance Committee will have some numbers, so that perhaps a month before town meeting, we could schedule a meeting with them to go over the numbers. But they're the biggest, one of the biggest bodies, are the biggest body in town that controls the biggest amount of the budget. And if we don't have their numbers when we meet with the Finance Committee, it's phenomenal.
So who do you mean by "we"? Because the school department and school committee has always gone to the Finance Committee and given numbers well before town meeting. But you mean the Board of Selectmen? They haven't come to the Board of Selectmen?
No. We've gotten numbers from the school committee at the last minute.
Who do you mean by "we"? The Board of Selectmen?
The school committee has gotten numbers to the Finance Committee at the last minute. Or to us. Either way.
The school committee has presented to the Finance Committee for the last 10 years that I know of, and some of those presentations I made, months before the town meeting. They were called by the Finance Committee, just like every other department head. I agree, the Board of Selectmen aren't usually part of that process, but there is a relationship long-established between the Finance Committee and the school department.
Yeah, Mr. Hammond?
The charter clearly states, it's a school budget, it's supposed to be presented to town administration prior to anything else. So the fact that it's been done for 10 years, it's been done wrong. What was the date that that was supposed to come? The school's supposed to present a budget, you put a date on it, Mr. Katsunovich?
I think the charter requires the first or second Monday of January.
Have you gotten it yet?
We did get a letter from the school department.
Did you get the budget?
No, we have not.
No, you have not. So they've already violated the charter. Now, how are we supposed to manage making cuts and everything else when we can't get the budget on time? It's already been violated. I have a list of positions here that I requested, and these are all school positions, these are all brand-new positions in the last three years. The letter we got when we asked for a 5% cut identified one position that was still open and said, we'll pretty much deal with this later. Well, when is later? The budget was supposed to be in already. I mean, if you're going to do a level-funded budget, can you present it to the town administration? If you're going to ask for an increase, can you do it? And if you're going to honor the fact that we have a 10% cut, can you please present something that will reflect it? But, I mean, I guess I'm a little lost here, because the procedures on this are very clearly stated, and to act like we don't know what is beyond, is beyond me, it's beyond... I mean, we have been discussing this since, what, October, these potential cuts? November, we started looking at it. We said, you know, I think I got a letter in October identifying these cuts of this report we just got received. So we've been looking at this in October in anticipation of this. But no, you know, the school department has not, and still has not, and pretty much said they won't.
Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. Chairman, I hear what Mr. Hammond is saying about the school department's submission. I'm not going to take a contrary position to that, but I do want to say, because the superintendent is not here, I think you all received a memorandum, I hope you received a memorandum last Friday from the superintendent, saying that they had...
a memorandum last Friday from the superintendent saying that they had a leadership meeting scheduled on their budget in December, which had to be postponed because of the ice storm, and they were trying to catch up, make up time for those meetings that were lost. And in fact, this past Saturday, they had scheduled a budget meeting internally to which the Board and the Finance Committee were invited, and that they would submit the budget as soon as it was complete. But they had expressed in that memorandum, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not obviating the Charter's requirements, they had, had expressed in that memorandum that they tried to do it in December.
Mr. Hammond?
I figure everyone knows how I feel about the Charter. We bent over backwards when Bob was in the hospital with a heart attack to satisfy the Charter requirements for the reorganization. I mean, I think we were in a worse position than ice storm. I have the letter here, a letter from the school department that has identified $46,000 out of a $22 million budget to cut. These people with less than $100,000, million have identified more than that. The people sitting in here today, who care enough to come? The Charter is very clear on how this appropriate, this is properly supposed to be done. Maybe the Board of Selectmen haven't done it in the past, maybe that's why we're facing a $2.2 million shortfall now. I don't know, I wasn't here. But in terms of being in part of the process, I mean, I've been in Eddie's office, sitting with him, I've sat with Charlie, I've thrown out every crazy idea I could think of to cut, increase revenue without hurting somebody, anything I could think of. The only idea I've heard from this Board is raise taxes. It's the only idea I've heard from anyone. I just, I, I'm at a loss. I mean, like, proverbially throw up their hands, we're bringing, so I don't understand why, when are we getting part of the process? Call Eddie and sit down with him, he'll get you up to speed.
Mr. Westman?
I got two things. First, I'd like to get the budget, because all I got is one page, not everybody else. It's all I got is one page. They said they can save $46,000 out of their budget. You take a look, what we're trying to save, you know, it's ridiculous on the money that the town's putting up beside the school. And I also like to find out when you guys are going to meet with the, you know, state to find out exactly what we're going to get cut, are we going to get cut?
Well, let me, let me clarify that last thing, because I think it may be some confusing. The Chairman and I met with Representative Frost and at that point Senator-elect Moore, and both of them committed to work with us on that, on setting up that meeting. That's the meeting that Bob referred to before, is hopefully later this month.
Oh, okay, that's what I wanted.
As far as cuts in '09, the Governor has expressed publicly, and there's been a lot of stories about it, that he's going before the legislature for the authority to revisit the current local aid funding that would impact town immediately, impact all the cities and towns immediately. Thirdly is the issue of '10, that we're starting now, the preparation of '10, that I think is what Mr. Hammond is also referring to. So when you say, "When we get the number," as soon as we have numbers, we're going to bring them to the Select Board.
Okay, because that's what I'd like to see.
Going back before anyone makes any comments, I don't know if you want to do it now, Mr. Valentine made a suggestion that perhaps one month before the town meeting, that we have a joint, that we schedule a joint meeting with the Finance Committee to go over numbers this year. Irregardless of what we do, I think that we should schedule a round.
Thank you. Someone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, this is a vote. Mr. Hammond?
I know we've been debating back and forth, and I get loud and I get excited, but the one thing that keeps coming back, that will not lose anyone's job, it won't kill anybody, it won't cut services, is the GIC. That is, no matter how you look at this, whether it's 1.5 million, whether it's 2.2, that GIC is the most crucial part to closing this gap. And I want to reiterate, it does not close it for 2010, but it entirely changes the way we approach it, and I believe with the adoption of that, we can get through this, I'm not making promises, we can get through this without a cut in services and hopefully a cut in payroll. But that is not up to us, that is up to the employees and the employees in their entirety. So as we sit here and argue to raise taxes to save the employee, if we get a yes or a no on this GIC as soon as possible, this is the most crucial piece of information to know moving forward. And unfortunately, we need this today. With that, I move that this Board, as the GIC Employee Committee, to vote in consideration of adoption of the GIC by February 15th. I ask that this Board appoint two delegates from the Selectmen to sit with the employees to answer any questions they may have concerning their outstanding thoughts. With that, to also reiterate the importance of the adoption. If they don't adopt this...
Can I second before you finish your motion? Because I second, and I, you and I obviously disagree on a lot here, so I'll be real vocal about the fact that...
Are you kidding?
That you are right on that this is the one to push on, and this is the one to say, "Look, rather than talk about cuts, we can, we can find out whether the, the employees are willing to work with us and, and make this happen and make this, provide for a much brighter future." No matter, you know, whether it does end up being 1.5 or 2.2, this is a step to a much brighter future for everybody in Auburn. So I, I wanted to just not second quietly, but, but thank Nick for his leadership on this particular issue.
I'd just add one thing in regard to it, and I sort of touched on it before, we're in times that we've never been in before. We're not in experienced waters, and people have to understand that they can't go along and continue along the way they had in the past. And something like this is going to have to change, it's going to have to be accepted, otherwise it's going to mean the loss of jobs, whether they like it or not. So they, they need to look, you know, it's a matter of having a job and not having a job. You know, people are, are in some instances, you know, bypassing, you know, increases and so on now just to keep their, keep their job. And everything has to be looked at in a different manner over the next couple of years, other than it has been in the past 30 or 40.
I will have an extremely high, I, I will not support any tax increase if the GIC gets voted down. It doesn't even make sense to me, it's not, it doesn't make common sense to me. To, to put it on the burden of the taxpayer when there's an option for the employee to help, I mean, I can't support that. And I hope you feel, at least have some kind of understanding of why. You know, this doesn't cost, this is not going to be a deficit or a loss of hours or a loss of services. This is, you know, I understand this issue's with it, nothing's perfect, but in light of the situation, helps. And it's huge. It's huge, I mean, it's, it's...
He's got a motion, so when you, when you, that, well, let's go ahead with that motion and just in discussion, we have a, a motion and a second, and I fully support it, and, and the only option on the table is not a tax increase. I, I think we're going to have to make a lot of the cuts that we're looking at right now, just to deal with the 1.5. So it, it's a mischaracterization to say we're only looking at a tax increase, and I, I fully support the GIC. And I, I think if we can get the groups to agree to it, and we, we still need the tax increase to balance the budget, I, I hope that we would reconsider it. It, it's not just for the town employees, the employees provide services to every resident in this town, that's the reason why the employees exist. They don't exist just to collect the paycheck, they provide incredibly valuable services that we all rely on every day. It's not a special interest group. They, they make the town work. So I, I fully support this motion. I recognize that we're likely to make other budget cuts just to, and, and there's going to be, likely to be layoffs just to deal with the 1.5, but I hope we haven't closed the door. And, and if we want to let it hinge on, I'm perfectly happy to let it hinge on if the GIC is approved by people by such and such a date, that we'll reconsider it, I'm happy to go along with that. I think that's open minded.
Mr. Hammond?
I'm not saying I would support an increase, but I'll tell you what, it's a lot easier to look at a resident at a time of disaster like this and explain why you raised their taxes when you can rebut that the employees also turned around and saved the town $1.3 million so they could save their jobs. I think it helps your argument.
Yep, agreed.
Across the board, so...
I mean, it, because it's not going to address the issue for this year.
It won't, but it certainly makes budgeting a lot easier.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I just hate to deal with those issues that we're going to face this year, and that's the only point that I was trying to make, is that we're looking at out years for the, the benefits of the GIC, and at the same time, we're looking at our contractual obligations are only going to increase in the out years as well, and we've got to pay the bill. So we, we need this, we need to keep the door open to the possibility of that tax increase.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any other motions, huh, at this point?
I'd like to be appointed to be the delegate, one of the delegates to sit down with anyone who has questions regarding it.
Yes.
To approach.
Our GIC.
I'll do that as well.
Okay, Dr. Gribbinsen, Mr. Hammond, will represent the Board for the GIC to the respective groups.
Great.
Mr. White, we're going to get the...
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, this is a vote.
Okay, now, we're going to get the budget from the schools, though.
Schools were putting the budget over to the, to the Finance Committee.
Did you come to, did you come to Ms. Kastanovich before anyone? So I would move that we sent a letter informing them that they are late and to ask them to return it as soon as possible.
Yeah, that's my, because I want to see your budget.
Just a second on that. I think that was a motion.
Yeah, it's a motion.
It was second?
Yeah, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Five to nothing? Anything else on that issue? Okay, moving on, gender item 9E, marijuana law. This item has been requested be put on the agenda by Mr. Hammond.
Yeah, I'm looking for an update from the Chief on this, I've read a tremendous amount.
I guess as was just shown, we have more burning issues than burning marijuana, but the, the long and short of it is, I would anticipate probably coming in to town meeting in May with some sort of a bylaw. I, I have a, a draft that, there's still some question out there as to whether or not, if you create a bylaw, if this can be made an arrestable offense, or if it's going to have to have somewhat of a, of an additional civil penalty to it. I'm going to have to do some more research between now and then, I'm probably going to have to engage Mr. Henigan and, and get his opinion as to which way we should, we should proceed. But I would anticipate something for the May Town Meeting. If, if that answers your question.
Well, I have a statement I'd like to read regarding what I read. I'm not looking for a debate here, so I'm going to read this, and of course let you respond.
Sure.
This is for the people at home as well. As you know, the people of Massachusetts overwhelmingly voted to pass legislation decriminalizing marijuana by a margin of two to one. It's no secret that law enforcement has been a critic of this law since it was proposed. While I recognize there are certain deficiencies, the people of this great state have spoken, and the law does not legalize marijuana. But as of today, in Auburn, for all intents and purposes, we have, very publicly have. The Chief, an outspoken critic of the law, has made national news moderately by stating publicly that the town of Auburn will not be enforcing the new law. I have seen the Chief quoted, saying, "There is little incentive for police to enforce the law, nor am I planning to get the ability to do that." And articles such as the Telegrammer Gazette say he thinks it's the worst law ever enacted in Massachusetts. New England Cable News ran a television piece with the heading, "Police Chief Refuses to Enforce the New Marijuana Law." I have serious concerns as to why these comments would be made publicly. It certainly does not help the town of Auburn as being known as a pot safe haven. It is a clear violation of the oath of office taken by the Chief, and I would further wonder if the Chief is within his power to ignore the laws and refuse to enforce them because he disagrees with them. This story was picked up and has been published in the Boston Globe, the Associated Press, Yahoo News, WAAF, WBZ, New England Cable News, Telegrammer Gazette, and several national marijuana advocacy magazines. Essentially, we've publicly invited every pothead from here to Seattle to come to Auburn and smoke marijuana without any repercussion. Further, it was detailed in several articles that the offender could just lie to the police about the name, assuming no other infraction were committed at that time. I'm not sure how this helps our patrolmen in doing their jobs. I liken it to telling a robber how to bypass the security system. The Chief's oath of office is as follows: "To solemnly swear that he will bear true faith and allegiance to the United States of America and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and he will support the Constitution and laws thereof, so help him God. Calling the law a train wreck, the worst law ever, and refusing to enforce it is hardly what I consider supporting the laws." This oath mentions the Constitution of the United States, the single most important document in all this land. It's no accident that the first three words of the Constitution are "we the people." And a vote of two to one in favor of this law is a mandate, and is reflective of "we the people." And should we be respected, like it or not. The oath continues to accept the office of Chief of Police for us of the town of Auburn, and agree to obey and be bound by such rules and regulations as are or may be from time to time laid down for the government of the Police Department of the town of Auburn, and to carry out his duties as Chief faithfully and partially, and to the best of his abilities. The police, the policy of not enforcing the law, coupled with the public comments, exhibit neither impartialness nor faithfulness. This is of great concern to me. I recognize police officers are faced with a very difficult decision on a daily basis, and oftentimes use their discretion. This is not the same. A unilateral announcement of refusing to enforce the law goes far beyond an officer's discretion, as officers are not even given discretion as to whether or not to enforce this law. The government has a system of checks and balances. It is the role of the police to issue tickets to those in possession of less than an ounce of marijuana, that's what, that's what question two stated. What happens after that in determining how to enforce the ticket is irrelevant to the issuance of the ticket, as we have all heard the phrase, "Tell it to the judge." In summation, contrary to the numerous articles written, gaining moderate national attention, marijuana is not legal in Auburn. Whether you agree with the law or not, it is not a reason to unilaterally and publicly announce refusal to enforce the law. I'm sure the merits and deficiencies of this law will be worked out in legislative and judicial branches, but it should not be worked out in the Police Department. No one is above the law. Thank you.
Well, I think first of all, I'd have to inquire as to where, where you obtained that.
Obtained what?
The statement that you just read.
I wrote it.
Where did that come from?
I wrote it.
You wrote it?
I wrote this.
Well, I will say to you that there were several articles that have been written by others that pertain to this specific law, which, which in fact is a train wreck, despite your disbelief in that. If you'd allow me to read the following, from the Mayor of the City of Worcester, "Mrs. Luke said there is no significant," I'm sorry, she said, "There is significant confusion on how to implement question two without changing the original intent of the referendum. There are so many exceptions, and its lack of clarity virtually renders it ineffective." Mrs. Luke said, "Something needs to be done at the state level to set uniform standards for all communities." In an interview with the head of the Department of Public Safety, Public Safety and Security Secretary Kevin Burke said, "The state is recommending communities pass their own ordinances against public pot smoking. Juveniles caught under, with under an ounce are supposed to undergo drug education." But Burke said that there currently isn't a program to refer people to. He says, "A variety of state agencies are working to develop that program, which is required by the new law, but there is little money and no immediacy for the program." Massachusetts officially decriminalized possession of small amounts of marijuana yesterday, but many police departments across the state were essentially ignoring the voter passed law, saying they would not even bother to ticket people they see smoking marijuana. "We're just basically not enforcing it right now," said Mark Alaventia, Chief of Police in Clinton, a central Massachusetts town of about 8,000, who said the law was so poorly written that it cannot be enforced. You probably have a lot of offices that unless there's a caller complaining about it, won't even bother with it. They probably handled a lot of it informally before, and probably more so now. They probably handled a lot of it informally before and probably more so now. This law has major, major flaws. I take exception with the fact that you infer that I neglect my position as chief of police. I am quite mindful of my position as chief of police, and although my job is to enforce the law, my job is also to protect the town. And I'm also mindful of what our insurance deductible is should we get sued. Under this law, if there's somebody that is smoking a marijuana cigarette and the police officer goes over with a civil fine, which in and of itself is a problem, this is a copy of what the state has put together. There's no carbon copies, there's no photocopies, it's substandard, to say the least. There needs to be some sort of a uniform citation like there are for traffic tickets. However, if the officer went over and attempted to identify the person who was smoking marijuana and the person didn't want to give their name, they don't have to. So if the person said, "My name is Nicholas Hammond," that's who they make the citation out to, to Nicholas Hammond. Now, when Nicholas Hammond receives a citation in the mail, because it has to be mailed within 20 days, he's probably not going to be too happy if he decided to sue the town. Irregardless of whether we win or lost, the town's still on the hook for the deductible from our insurance carrier. For the $100 fine, until these issues are addressed, I don't think it's worth enforcing. I don't think it's worth putting the town in that type of a position of liability. I would rather wait until we get some direction from the state, and although I agree that we need to act diligently, we need to act cautiously as well. Now, let's assume for the sake of argument that the individual who's smoking gives his or her true name. If 30 seconds later, they decide to throw that citation that they've just been given in the trash, they're completely allowed to do so. There is no mechanism whatsoever for the court to collect that fine. So you're, in essence, handing out a ticket for $100 to someone that they don't have to pay. I fail to see the logic in that type of enforcement. I think police officers are given a lot of latitude and have wide discretion in how they can conduct themselves each and every single day. Just because somebody gets stopped for speeding, they don't necessarily get a speeding ticket. I don't think that that is neglecting their positions. I think it's using common sense, and I think it's having some discretion in trying to make a determination if somebody has a lengthy driver's history and if a citation is required. The $100 fine is the equivalent in Auburn of getting a parking ticket for parking in a handicap space. As it stands right now, the... I should say, as of last Thursday, the Drug Lab, where we submit all of our drug evidence to, they had received one. They probably do 35 cities and towns in the area, one analysis for marijuana. And that came from right here, from the town of Auburn. We were the only ones. We're not ignoring the large marijuana issues, far from it. The female officer who you saw standing here earlier tonight, she arrested somebody with a pound of marijuana going down Route 20, going 55 miles an hour in a 40 mile an hour zone. Those cases aren't being ignored. If we're turning a blind eye to cases like that, then I could understand your statement, but that's not even remotely the case, not even remotely true. In fact, the Drug Lab has said, "If you send us under an ounce of marijuana to have it analyzed so that you can proceed with your $100 citations, we're going to send it back to you. We're not analyzing it. Don't send it. We don't want it. We're not going to do it." So I think that until all of the problems are worked out of this law, and I have three pages of proposed changes that the mass chiefs of police are going to submit to the legislature that are deficiencies in the law. I think those need to be instituted, and I'm sure they'll come to some sort of an agreement, and the legislation will get filed and will get passed in one form or another. The other issue that I take exception with is the issue of enforcement. It appears the town meeting passed Section 21 of Chapter 40 back on May 5 of 1975. It is unclear whether or not they had adopted Section D of that statute. Section D of that statute is what allows you to issue a citation under this new law. So I don't even know if we've adopted the statute where we could do that even if I wanted to do it. So there are many things that still need to be done, that need to be looked at carefully, and I emphasize carefully, before we go ahead and start handing out $100 tickets to people. It's probably not going to be resolved until the spring. And based upon those issues, I have no intention of having my officers hand out $100 tickets to people who have a small amount of marijuana as we sit here today. When something changes, then I'll be more than happy to address it.
Mr. Hammond?
Your first quote was from who? You quoted Luke's?
The first quote, yeah, the mayor of the city of Worcester, yes.
Yeah, they're enforcing the law. They have the tickets. They said they will be enforcing this law. As much as they don't like it, they're enforcing it. There are two towns that will not enforce this law that have been stated, Clinton and Auburn. 349 other municipalities have come out against this law with the same concerns Chiefs Lucas has had. I agree with all of them. I agree with every concern, but we're arguing the deficiencies of the law to an oath of office, saying that even if I don't like the law, I will uphold this law with impartialness or nor faithfulness. Clearly, the statements made show partial. He doesn't like the law.
Well, Mr. Hammond, I can tell you that I've spoken to...
Can I speak?
Sure.
Thank you. There is a difference between possession versus consumption. Under the law, under Article 2, and I didn't want to get into this with the debate, but we're turning it from the oath of office and the theory of upholding the law whether you like it or not to the deficiencies of the law. In Article 2, it clearly states, "Nothing contained herein shall prohibit a political subdivision," which would be Auburn, "of the Commonwealth from enacting ordinances, bylaws, regulating, and prohibiting consumption of marijuana." So I would equate that to an open containment law or public drunkenness, something to that effect, which I think you had mentioned you started working on a law. Let's not confuse possession, which this law made civil, and consumption, which this did not address. The problem with it is, because marijuana possession was always legal, consumption was never addressed, because if you had it, you were going to jail.
I'm sorry, what was that last part?
Because the law made it illegal to possess, there were no laws enacted for consumption, because possession would have put you in jail. So it doesn't say, "Well, you can legally have a puppy, you can't smoke it." The law doesn't exist. Why? Because, well, if you had it, you were going to jail, whether you were smoking it or not. Now that's changed. The no-name thing, I've heard this a lot, and I agree. If you're sitting there with this joint in your pocket and you give no name, one, if you have the audacity to lie to a cop and he doesn't hook you for disturbing the peace or loitering, I'd be shocked. Second, as I've read most of these articles in the paper, they are usually accompanied by another infraction, i.e. speeding, driving, something, stealing. Everyone has been accompanied. So in this case, if someone's driving down the road with a joint in their car, we're still not ticketing them, even though we have the ability to ascertain their name and all their information, in terms of enforcement of the law. Whether or not the law is enforceable or not, it doesn't fall on the jurisdiction of the Police Department. That falls on the jurisdiction of the courts, the judicial branch. There may not be anything... There may not be any cause right now to enforce it, but I'm sure they will, and it does not preclude the Police Department from doing its job with impartialness to the law. I agree with everything he said in terms of the deficiencies, and I fully support his... I actually made a motion to create a laws for the consumption. But the oath is very clear, and if you care to read it, I would encourage you to. I still don't understand why we went public. These are all concerns, these are all great concerns, but to go public and say, "Hey, if you, Bob Johnson from Gloucester, and you smoke pot at the mall, we're not going to give you a ticket or anything." A policy better probably kept not to the nation. The city of Worcester is enforcing this law. They have the ticket books. The city of Boston is enforcing this law. They don't like it, they have the ticket books. Billerica is enforcing this law. Springfield is enforcing this law. Everyone is enforcing this law with the exception of two towns. Two, Clinton and Auburn, have publicly come out and said, "We are not enforcing this law." I don't know if it's within the police powers to decide what laws they do and do not enforce. But it's not the same as discretion when at the scene, based on certain circumstances. This is a unilateral, wide-sweeping policy of not enforcing the law. I thought the legislature made the law, the judicial were to interpret it, and the police were to enforce and execute it. There is a major difference between discretion and a unilateral policy of not enforcing the law, so let's not confuse those two.
Chief?
I would agree. Let's not confuse the two. Between the city of Worcester, the city of Boston, and the city of Springfield, how many citations have they issued for smoking marijuana?
That's... Like I said, I don't want to debate with you. They've come out publicly and said, "If you smoke marijuana in our city, we will give you a ticket through the fullest extent of the law." What happens after is not our concern. We think the law stinks, there's a lot of problems, but you're going to get a ticket. The town of Auburn said, "We think the law stinks, so come to Auburn, smoke weed, and we promise you we won't give you a ticket."
So I think that the difference there probably is, they've probably issued almost zero tickets like us, only I have publicly said that we're not going to. They have publicly said they're going to, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to in the real world.
It's a major concern, going public with such a policy.
But it's factual.
I think it's...
You may have a concern with it, but it's factual.
I think it's out of your power to ignore a law. If you thought rape was stupid, could you ignore that law? Murder, could you ignore that law? I mean, where does it end? It's a slippery... I know these are extremes, but it's a slippery slope. At what point does a law that you disagree with go, "I'm not going to enforce that one"? Speeding's not illegal today.
In Massachusetts, there is one law that says the police shall.
This law says it.
Shall.
Of course, I have it highlighted. "The police department serving each political subdivision of the Commonwealth shall enforce Section 32L in a manner consistent with noncriminal disposition provisions of Section 21D of Chapter 40 of the general laws as modified. The person in charge," that would be you, "of each such department shall direct the department's public safety officer or another appropriate member of the department to function as a liaison between the department and persons providing drug awareness, programs pursuant to 32M of this chapter, and clerk magistrate's office in the District Kirk serving the political subdivision. This person shall, in charge, shall also issue books of noncriminal citation forms to the department offices which conform with the provisions of Section 21D of 40th Chapter General."
And when the provisions of the law are tightened and the amendments are made, as I said earlier, I would be happy to come to town meeting with a recommendation for a bylaw change, and then we shall do that. I'll be happy to do that at that time.
Again, I don't see that qualifier in the law voted on by the people. I mean, that's my concern here. I don't see that qualifier. I know it's a bad law. I agree with you 100 percent. I'm just saying, I don't think you have the discretion to unilaterally say we're not enforcing that law, and I question that. And it's certainly, I mean, a violation of the oath you took to uphold the law with impartialness and faithfulness, to support the Constitution and to enforce the laws laid down by the land.
So are you saying you want me to issue violation notices or books to someone for a law that may be changed in two weeks and spend money printing that for a statute that I don't even know that the town has adopted?
The state's adopted it. It's very explicit. I mean, I don't know how you have the authority to say, "I don't like the law." And if I'm wrong, please tell me. I don't like this law, I'm not enforcing it. I just don't see it. Furthermore, that's the biggest issue I have, is we went publicly and told everyone. National News, Associated Press picked this up. I read it on Yahoo News, front page. Auburn Police Will Not Enforce the Law. NECN, Police Chief Refuses to Enforce the Law. A month ago, we sat here, I asked you when you wanted to do these, I said, "How many cruisers you have on at any given time?" You didn't feel comfortable answering that, and I understood.
Yep, that's correct.
This, I think, is more egregious than saying, "I have four or five cruisers on it." I mean, this is beyond... We can go back and forth all night, chief. I understand what you're saying, and principally, I agree. I agree. So all the key facts you said, I agree with. There's deficiencies, but I don't know how the deficiencies in legislature and the judicial branch authorize you, as an executive branch, to ignore it. You just write the ticket, whatever happens, I mean, that's my job, write the ticket. What you guys do with it, I don't care. Whether a guy gets off on DUI or not is irrelevant to you, as long as you lock them up because you had cause.
I think we need significant clarification from the state before we proceed. I don't think it's prudent at this time to proceed.
Ms. Westman?
Chief, I just a couple of quick questions for you. Is there any age on this... I mean, you know, for the person, is there any age for the person who has the marijuana on him?
There is no age. The only thing that it addresses with respect to age is anyone that's under 18. They have to be sent to a drug treatment program, and their parents have to be notified.
So in other words, we can get a kid going to grammar school, he can walk in a school and have a joint, and there's nothing much you can do about it?
Other than that, no.
It's a good law.
There is no drug programs for people that are under 18.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at.
Go ahead.
The schools would have the authority to enforce that through expulsion, anything they wanted. They can enforce that. They need, and this wasn't part of my motion, they need to reevaluate their drug enforcement policies to make up for the deficiency of this law, where one-year expulsion for possession would constitute, you know, constitute something.
Yeah, but the problem is they haven't got it now.
Further, without issuing those tickets, I mean, we're supposed to notify the parents. I have two little kids. I know some people up here, I would like to know if my kid got caught driving around with a dime bag of weed. And if we're not issuing tickets, we're not going to know as parents. So when it's for the kids, it's really for the kids. That has nothing to do with the $100 fine. If I issue you a ticket, I get to call mommy, and because you're in a car, I get to know your name.
That, Mr. Hammond, that's something that we did routinely prior to the implementation of this legislation.
That is the law right now. It actually gives you the everything.
We did it before. You don't need a law to figure out that somebody that's 12 years old with marijuana probably has to have a parent notified.
And that's what's part of this law.
We didn't need this to do that, is my point.
And a $1,000 fine and drug housing.
Which, for which there is no funding and there are no programs in place.
Again, that's for the legislature and judicial branch to figure out.
Mr. Miller?
Chief, with full you, Mr. Taylor, what does it cost to send a sample?
You can't, they won't test it.
Well, we just say they did, but we'll say it was three ounces, man. I mean, is there basic genetic analysis?
No, it's the state lab, the state pays for it. It does not cost us money. Nope.
Ms. Papas?
Yeah. Chief's Lucas.
Can you come up to the... Because no one can hear you.
Chiefs Lucas, I just have a question for you. By not enforcing this law, what does that teach the kids in our community? Because I personally, as the Recreation and Culture Director, teach drug-free, stay fit, stay positive, lead a healthy, happy life. So by not enforcing this law and making it public and national, personally, as a parent of a freshman in high school, it seems like it gives the kids the green light that it's okay. And I think the biggest thing as a parent and a community leader and someone in your position to not take the stance that, you know what, drugs are bad and we shouldn't allow our kids to do it, and if the state passes a law and you publicly don't enforce it, my only concern is the kids in our community and letting them think that that's okay. Because, you know, for what adults do, it's different, but the kids are our future. And if you're not enforcing a law and letting us parents know, if my kid, like Nick, if your kid was in a car, I just, it blows my mind that you wouldn't protect our kids to enforce that.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Paul.
You're absolutely correct with respect to notifying parents... You're, you're absolutely correct with, with respect to, um, notifying parents when, when their kids have marijuana, which is, which is what we have done and which is what we still continue to do today. The, the voters, the voters sent a, a strong message when they passed this referendum that they wanted to decriminalize marijuana, and it is decriminalized. The, the most that we could do is issue them a hundred dollar fine, which we are not doing now, but we will be doing in the springtime after we have proper language formulated that's been approved in May.
I have a quick question for Mr. O'Connor. Regarding to the ticket bill that this is gonna have to go onto, when I was here, we have the ticket bill, we've put it into, into place, I'm not sure about that Section D or not, but prior to issuing any citations, like I did for a fire prevention, it had to be accepted, that whatever I wanted to do had to be accepted by town meeting in a list. Isn't that the same case with this? Doesn't this have to be added to that before you can even do anything?
Through the chair, the chief has expressed that there's a question regarding that.
Doesn't state law supersede if there's no law to the contrary?
No, because it, they're, they're saying that you have to use the ticket bill that we use now, like, like the chief, yeah, that, like, Chief Wynto uses that I had. If we go in and do, we do a fire prevention check on a building and there's a violation, they choose not to fix it. We could give them a citation for 50 bucks, 100 bucks, or whatever, and that went into the, to the clerk, okay? That's the same ticket bill that they put this under, and in order for me to do that at the time, and in order for Chief Wynto to do it, he has to list, like, Chapter 48 or, or whatever laws that we're gonna have to list it, and it goes before town meeting, and it's approved by town meeting. And then, and only then, could you start issuing citations. I think that's one of the biggest flaws here, is that they don't have that.
I firmly disagree 100 percent.
Well, I don't care if you disagree or not.
State law, the state law is very clear that this, that-
But read the state law, the state's law says that you use the citation book, and you have to do that, read the citation.
It says it right here, it says exactly, and there's also a question and answer from the Attorney General, which specifies that it can be done under state law.
Well, I, I think you'll find-
I mean, it under state-
I think you'll find that it has to go before town meeting to add it.
Everybody else is enforcing this, and nobody, I mean, Boston's doing it, Worcester's doing it, Auburn and Clinton are the only ones who think it can't be done. So, we have 349 other chiefs who say, I hate the law, but I'm gonna do it because it's my job, I took an oath to uphold the law whether I like it or not, a, and here, we're thinking of every way not to enforce it because we hate the law and it's incomplete. I, if Boston can do it, maybe we should call Chief Gemm, uh, Worcester can do it, we'll call Chief Gemm and find out how to do it, or we'll call the Boston chief and find out how to do it. Um, I mean, they have a charter, they have a charter, they have bylaws.
They have a council, all they have to do is go before a council.
Worcester Council, Worcester Council has not brought this up, they started talking about it, made, took no action, it's being enforced in Worcester. I've, I've checked on everything, under the guidance of the Attorney General, this is enforceable, and you can do it. Now, maybe it gets thrown on the judicial branch, maybe it does, but what does that have to do with the issuance, because the law says it should be issued? I mean, I-
I, I find it difficult to issue any type of a citation, criminal or civil, to someone that you have absolutely no way of identifying. I, I have, I have a, an issue with that, I truly do.
I'll, I'll play devil's advocate, I'll buy into that. You said unilaterally, we're not issuing tickets. So, let's assume a kid is sitting there, you, you stop him for nothing, you search him and find weed. Let's forget about this, you know, the Fourth Amendment, but you find weed with no other infraction. Yeah, he can lie to you, if he has the audacity to. I was a kid, I wouldn't lie. Probably the kids from around here, the teacher, the, the cop probably knows who it is anyway. Regardless, let's throw all that out. If someone's in a car, you have every right to know their name. Yes? Of course.
You, you have a right to ask them for their name. If they say to you, I have no identification, or they don't want to tell you-
They've committed a motor vehicle violation.
You're talking about a, a driver, not somebody that's in a car.
If someone's in a car, motor vehicle violation.
They have to identify themselves to you.
We don't have the ticket books, we're not gonna ticket them because we didn't get the book. So, there will be certain, and this is where police discretion comes in, I don't know the kid's name, he could be lying to me, so I'm not gonna ticket him, but I got the book, whereas, I just pulled him over for speeding, not only is he getting a speeding ticket, I found a, I found a joint in his glove box, so he's getting a ticket too. That argument doesn't hold for that. Now, every article I've read in the newspaper since this law has been enacted is, it has come on the, on the auspice of another infraction, even in Auburn. Speeding, so, some way to identify the individual. Now, there will be those instances where, for some reason, some kid's walking around holding weed or has it stapled to his hat or something, but cha- chances are, you're gonna need a reason to search him, which probably is the infraction where you're going to get their name.
Like what?
You tell me stealing, uh, shoplifting, speeding, loitering, disturbing the peace, all the things that I used to get busted up for when I was a kid. Yeah, I mean, I, cops, uh, let's be realistic, cops ask you your name, you tell them. If you don't, I would, you're going to jail for something. Disturbing the peace, disorderly conduct, loitering, something, you're gonna get something.
Do you know what that leads to? Disorderly and disturbing the peace, that leads to people going to court, getting found not guilty because, because it's a trumped-up headhunting charge-
I understand that, I agree.
Which leads to notification within the next five years that you're being sued. That's what disorderly and disturbing the peace leads to.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but the, and what I'm saying is the auspice of not being able to find out the kids.
Well, I have no intention of headhunting to, to increase marijuana civil citations-
No one's asking you to.
Because, because it very well may lead to what you just said.
No one's, what I'm asking you to do is, when you have a, get the books, when someone gets pulled over for speeding and you find a nickel bag, you and every officer is prepared to issue a citation, what happens after that is irrelevant. No one's asking you to headhunt, no one's asking for anything. If a kid's walking down the street and got a pocket, weed in his pocket, you wouldn't have known it anyway. If someone wants to sit at home and get high to the sky, I could care less. What you do in your home is your own business. But, you need re, uh, chances are, there's gonna be an infraction that comes along with this possession charge, which will allow you to identify the name. I highly doubt that there is very many cases where some kid just gets pinched for possessing weed and didn't do anything else. How the hell would you even know to search? How could you search?
It would depend on what the circumstances were.
Exactly. If kid's doing nothing and has marijuana in his pocket, you're not gonna know it, never mind his name, you have no reason to stop him or search him. It's a Fourth Amendment issue at that point. We can argue back and forth.
Totally, I totally agree, it is a Fourth Amendment issue.
So, at this, I mean, the law is clear, we agree that the law is deficient, there's a lot of holes. The Mass Police Chiefs Association has identified many of them and will be sending it to the legislature, I'm sure they will be quick to enact. With that being said, the law is the law, you can't just ignore it because you don't like it. Publicly saying that we're not gonna enforce this law is even more damaging, in my opinion, than anything we could have done.
I think that, I think that we have, we have latitude and discretion in this law as we do with, with, with other laws.
Discretion means, I'll apply it when it fits and I won't, not, I won't apply it to anyone because I, I just think it's stupid, it's a train wreck. That's discretion, I'll apply it when it seems to make sense and I won't when it ain't. I don't know how discretion is, well, I don't like that law, so I'm not gonna enforce it. That's how I'm hearing, and I've read all the articles and watched the TV shows, and it said, it's a train wreck, I'm not enforcing this law under any circumstances, we're not getting the board, we don't have an incentive to enforce the law, not doing it. That's, that's just a unilateral, I'm not paying attention to that law. Discretion is, well, like, you could be lying to me, kid, so I'm not gonna give you a ticket, whereas, I mean, but you're, you're the chief, but with that, I move that this board publicly disagree with the chief's policy of not enforcing the marijuana laws written, voted on and approved by the voters. I love that this board supports kids smoking weed and not having their parents known. I move to request the opinion of the Attorney General, inquiring if the chief is even within his authority to set policy of not enforcing a law unilaterally.
We'll get two different motions.
Well, the first one got nothing.
All right, before, I didn't ask for a second. Second, the first motion? Okay, we're going to the second.
It's for the kids, huh? I move the board adopt a resolution supporting, supporting act in making consumption of marijuana in public a criminal offense allowed, allowing the town of Auburn to enact a series of bylaws which will establish a sensible marijuana policy as allowed under question two. These laws should focus solely on the consumption of marijuana, not possession, as Mr. Slukis has clearly stated, there are certain deficiencies, we should let that work out, but it does carve out consumption.
Anyone have a second on that motion?
So, so my, my, my question to you, Nick, is, is that, is that the same-
I'm not sure what law he has.
Is that the same issue that you're bring, that, is that the same law you're planning on bringing to, because I think we would support-
I, I, I would-
Like you're doing, going to town meeting.
I would support some form of that, however, I would respectfully request, this law is in its infancy, it's only 10 days old. I would really like to wait and see what other communities do, what the Attorney General approves, what the legislature approves, and go from there in May. I think that they may come up with language that is far superior than any one of us can come up with at 9:40, at, at, at night, at a selectmen's meeting. If they don't have better language, then I'd be more than happy to accept Mr. Hammond's language, but I'd at least like to look and see what's out there.
Some language, I don't wanna write it, I just wanna, I wanna get it going.
Ms. Westman?
Uh, this, this is gonna go back and forth all night, but, uh, what I'd like to see is, you know, in 10 days, they're gonna finally put it together, the law.
It's been, it's been 10 days, it's, it's, it's gonna take a little longer than that to play out.
Yeah, well, whatever it takes, we get it from, you know, from the state.
I'll be happy to pass along everything I get to the board.
Because it doesn't make sense to me, and I agree with you, you don't even know how old the kids can be, so if you get a three-year-old kid walking down the street with a joint, that's all well and good. It, it just doesn't make sense, so I just assume, wait till they get the legislation done the right way.
I, I think this board, how many have read this law in its entirety before you even vote? How many know the actual intricacies of this law? I believe you should read it, because in this, it says that only subdivisions can enact laws. Now, why there may be guidelines, which there already are, established by the Attorney General for bylaws, that's fine, but it, it clearly carves out that the state cannot enact the laws. The, the subdivisions has to, and I have it here. So, we can wait till we're blue in the face for the state to enact a law, they can't do anything about the possession. And, and it clearly says consumption. Now, you can wait for all these Supreme Court hearings to go on, but there's a law that's already written that says the police chief shall administer hundred dollar fines.
If, if it clarifies things, Mr. Hammond, I can tell you that there was already a meeting last Thursday. This is a, this is a priority for everyone in law enforcement, and I believe it's a priority for the governor's office, and I believe it's a priority for the legislature as well. I, I don't see them sitting on their hands with respect to this law, I, I see them doing something-
There are guidelines out by the Attorney General on how to write the bylaws, I've read them.
I, I have a draft copy.
Yeah, so what, I mean, what, they're already out, so, I mean, I'm making a motion, now, there's two separate issues here, possession, which is what this law really addresses, and then consumption, which basically says towns can do what towns feel they wanna do. My motion, my final motion, is to establish a set of laws for the consumption.
It, when I have, when I have language that is not in draft form, I'd be happy to report back to the board and present it to you for, for your, your input and/or your vote. I don't have that yet, the, the, the memo that's put up from the Attorney General's office isn't clear as to whether or not it can be an arrestable offense, or whether or not it has to be an additional fine. It doesn't, it doesn't answer the question, that question is still lingering out there, and there are attorneys who are debating this who have varying views as to which is permissible, and I don't know, and neither do they.
Right, so maybe we should get started on looking at all this stuff and what, you know, and, I mean, that's my proposal, is let's get started. What are we waiting for? I mean, you have a copy of the first draft, there is starting to become opinions.
If the board, if the board wants to vote to authorize, I'd be happy to contact Mr. Henigan tomorrow morning to get the ball rolling, if that, if that's the wish of the board.
I'm shocked that this board is gonna allow kids to smoke weed walking in schools with no concern, I'd rather see the kid challenge the law in court than to allow that to happen, but by inaction of this board, to allow kids to sit at the mall, to publicly say and to have no opinion on it, is, is absurd, it's absurd.
Mr. Valentine?
I, I just wanna state that instead of no opinion, Mr. Hammond, you don't have five Mr. Hammond's up here, and what this member is doing is saying, the man I trust on this issue is standing in front of that podium right there, and he's who we hired to do this job-
And take this oath of office.
And that's who I'm trusting to be doing the right thing here. The fact that he may have been vocal about the fact that this law needs to be fixed quickly, maybe helping it get fixed quickly, rather than other members of town, other members in other towns, which apparently, if we understand that only, that only one was even sent in for, to be checked, other, other police chiefs may have not made any public comments but haven't done a thing about it either, so they're just electing to not say anything, or claim they're going to have their officers do things that they're not actually doing. I don't see that as any more honorable than, than taking a stand and saying, I'm gonna help work this out, and I'm gonna work on it. So, please don't characterize other board members as somehow less than Mr. Hammond, because, and we somehow don't believe in children, when we've demonstrated for years an ability and a desire to work with children, and in this particular case, a trust in our, in the chief of police.
I urge you to read the oath of the chief of police, and, and, and write down the amount of violations of stating that I'm going to ignore a law has occurred. I urge you, I urge you to read the law.
And as I stated, when it is tightened up, we will implement it.
There's no qualifier, and question two, that the vote is mandated for a, there's a 60-day window stated by statute that is passed. The law is in force, the law should be in force.
Mr. Hammond, I'm telling you what I think is best for the town, if you choose to ignore my advice, you're certainly entitled to.
Can I at least get a, a public acknowledgement that announcing this from here to Seattle was not of the best decision-making? We, now, we wanna let the process go forward, but two weeks ago, we just wanted to tell the whole world that we're not enforcing the law. Why do we allow this debate to go any further?
I was just about to say, does the board wish to take, take action, or wait until, until such time that it's, the law is clarified, and, and then the chief will follow the, those actions? Because the, 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 I, I can see the point that Mr. Hammond is making, but the cost factor that is involved in initiating something that might be temporary is, is foundless, and, and we shouldn't go in that direction until we have some concrete information on the law, and even though you spoke out, uh, you know, you're being penalized for it or cited for it, and, uh, rather than the other 349 that haven't said anything, that are waiting until such time that something is brought forward, and then they'll either enforce or not enforce. So, uh, if the board so wishes, I'll address a motion to, to continue until such time that we have a ruling from the, uh, what, coming from the DA's office, no, from the, the House, Senate.
I think it's, I think he said it was going to be refined legislation, that the chiefs were submitting some-
They, they were.
Okay, so the Chiefs Association-
As soon as I have something, I'll be happy to bring it in.
Second.
Uh, discussion?
Uh, Mr. Hammond?
Well.
Huck, there's a motion and a second, yes and no?
No.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Westman?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman, yes, forward.
Thank you very much.
Next agenda item, 9F GIC, uh, do you have something additional to care about?
No, sir, that was already addressed.
We already addressed, yeah, okay. Uh, under old business, uh, school projects, street, street acceptance procedure, veterans' memorial corridor, cemetery land, conflict of interest policy, Barbara Ave, school buildings, committee Schedule 19, all no change. Item H, FY 2010 budget guidance, this item was continued from the last meeting, we have copies from the departments in response to the board's vote of October 6th, also enclosed our departmental responses to the board's vote to request a list of all new positions created in the last three fiscal years. Any comments from board members?
I believe it should be a tool used in the budgeting process, usually the newly created positions, and I don't wanna jump ahead, should be looked at to see, you know, what the need is for. Um, it's just another tool, there's no, don't read into it, but I think we need to look at all tools, and this is one of them. at all tools, and this is one of them.
Is that a formal motion?
No, just, you know, information for Ed and anyone else who wants to partake in the budget process.
Okay, anyone have anything else to add? Mr. Valentine?
I too, as Nick said, appreciate the time it took for people to pull this information together and to make these recommendations. And I wanna make sure, because we tend to have a relatively high-level oversight requirement on the budget, I wanna make sure that this information, and I assume it is, but just to make sure that I'm comfortable knowing this information is in the hands of the people who are going to be working through this budget, not only with the administration, but is it also gonna be made available to the finance committee so that they're aware of this level of detail as well, and they can take it into, you know, into account of their line item, their line item review.
Any other comments? Okay, moving on to agenda item eleven, legislative issues, are there any? Someone say something? Stan?
I just, I wanted to bring up the, the concept of special legislation. I know Mr. Griffin's brought it up for meals tax, potentially an increase of a hotel tax. In my packet that I sent, I also had some theories of sin tax, for instance, alcohol and cigarettes for a local tax. I understand that these in past have not been well-received on the Hill, but in light of the current fiscal financial, I wonder if this board feels that it might be worth taking another shot at any or all of them.
The meals and restaurant tax, I believe is under discussion right now by the, by the Senate, of the House.
First time the governor's supporting it, so.
Yeah, that was brought up about two years ago, if I'm not mistaken.
Times have changed.
Died in committee.
So that one is, is being discussed right now to pass it on to the town.
And I, and I think the one other that we probably, the time is right to explore it again, and we talked to Representative Faust and Senator Augustus about this, gosh, it must have been about two years ago, is the notion of the local impact fees that are in existence in a lot of states for new developments in the community of assessing local impact fees right up front with the development cost. Massachusetts has always been reluctant to, to consider those, but they are a way that many states are balancing the budget right now, so we might wanna put that, I shouldn't say want, we might, we should put that in front of our legislators, again, the, the notion of local impact fees.
Yeah, I would be in favor of that. If the board so wished, submit a letter to the representatives. Anything else on legislative miscellaneous? I have one issue, one thing, you, well, everyone has read about, the firefighter that got killed in Boston this week as a result of faulty brakes, and they began an inspection of their vehicles in Boston. The first truck that was brought in today had bad brakes, and I think that behooves us, and I hope we're taking a look at our, our vehicles to make sure that they're in working condition. Not only the fire department, but any of the larger vehicles and highway department are also in top condition, and that they're not on the roads being a hazard to some resident that might be driving down the street and have one of these vehicles coming out there out of control.
Paul, I had just one other issue, just a, a couple of citizen calls relating to the trash collection. If we could just send a note to them, and I just happened to notice on a Friday as well, is when they, when they spill on the street, that they clean up after it. There's a lot of litter that I'm getting complaints about in, in terms of particularly recyclables as they're dumping them in, that some items are not going in the truck and they're littering the neighborhoods and they're not picking them up. So if we could just send a note along, that would be great.
Okay, Mr. Hammond?
I'd like to make a motion that we ask for a joint meeting, which actually, we could probably do, you know, informal discussion, but a joint meeting with the finance committee to reevaluate the mileage reimbursement rate in light of the sharp declines of gas prices.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Gross. Do you wanna pick a date, or do you wanna check with them first?
They're a little busier than us, I think, in terms of meetings, so, well, I think we should work around that.
We'll take a, a five-minute recess before we go into our executive session. I need a motion to go into executive session in accordance with Mass General Laws, chapter thirty-nine, section twenty-three B, to deliberate on matters which done in an open meeting could detrimentally affect the position of the town regarding strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation to come out of executive session only to adjourn.
So moved, second. Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman, yes.[1777.13]